Steve Baker, whose son is deaf, drove three hours to get here and says it was worth the drive.
It's really wonderful to see the deaf community getting together and just the different organizations that are there for the deaf community.
A community that's proud of its culture and eager to share it with anyone willing to learn. I'm Rosha Goual for LA This Week.
Committee members of Deaf Fest L.A. say they hope to see more collaboration between city government and the deaf community. This year's festival was hosted by councilmembers Herb Wesson and Jose Wezar. In this week's list of things to do, a one-day festival celebrating handcrafted goods and mom-and-pop stores, a hike in Runyon Canyon, and the first-ever festival celebrating a famous hot sauce. If you're a fan of Etsy, the online handcrafted marketplace, then check out the One Day Pop-Up Festival taking place at Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles in the beautiful Oceanside Community of San Pedro on Saturday, October 26th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The indoor event dubbed "The Mom-and-Pop-Up Shop" is a collaboration between SoCal Etsy Guild and the Crafted Marketplace. You can buy handcrafted one-of-a-kind items as vendors set up shop for just one day. There will also be live music, DJs, beer, and food trucks to satisfy your appetite. Crafted at the Port of Los Angeles is located at 110 East 22nd Street in San Pedro. Go to craftedportla.com. Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Abara will be leading an advanced Runyon Canyon park hike on Saturday, October 26th. Meet at 8:00 a.m. at the Mulholland Parking Lot at 7200 West Mulholland Drive. The cross street is 2600 North Desmond Estate Road. This hike will have very steep up-and-down hills. As with any hike, Ranger Abara reminds participants to dress accordingly, wear hats, sunscreen, and bring water and snacks. And he notes that hikes are always canceled in the event of rain. For more information, email the ranger@ernieabara@lacity.org. If you love Sriracha Hot Chili Sauce, you know, the one with the rooster on the bottle, then you won't want to miss the first-ever Sriracha Festival taking place Sunday, October 27th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. It'll be taking place in the Arts District at Lot 613, located at 613 Imperial Street. This all-inclusive 21-over event spotlights the world's most iconic hot sauce by featuring multiple stations that allow guests to enjoy a variety of Sriracha-themed dishes, including desserts. Go to nightout.com/events/LA-Sriracha-Festival for ticket prices and information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Our next story, you won't want to take your eyes off the screen. It's truly a sight to behold, especially here in the hustle and bustle of the city, a flock of thousands upon thousands of migratory birds taking refuge in an unlikely place. These tiny dots dancing in formation may look like a swarm of bees from afar, but they're actually a massive flock of Boxer Swifts hovering above the L.A. sky, mesmerizing their captive audience as they prepare to make a stop for the night on their way south for the fall.
They do a bit of like a tease when they're going into the chimney because they fly around a couple times and then they finally just enter into the chimney.
The Boxer Swift is a tiny migratory bird some describe as a cigar with crescent wings. It's migrating from Canada and northern Washington State to southern Mexico and central America.
It's just really interesting how you see all these birds kind of come together. There's a lot of them. And they all kind of just descend into this chimney.
While the concrete jungle of Los Angeles may not be where you imagine migratory birds might take refuge on their long journey, Jeff Chapman of the Audubon Center at Debs Park says our city is more hospitable to wildlife than you might think.
Because of the Los Angeles River, which is a great resource for them, because they eat insects. There's a lot of insects over the river. And they also utilize our urban parks like Griffith Park, Elysian Park, and Debs Park as places to forage and find food.
On a recent Saturday, bird lovers as well as curious city slickers joined the Audubon Center atop the roof of Joe's Auto Park at 440 Broadway for the Birds Over Broadway Event to catch the spectacle of nature in action across the way at the Spring Arts Building. That building's chimney is where the birds enter en masse at dusk for an evening of rest. And this phenomenon is repeated night after night as other flocks of birds on the same migratory path stay at the same rest stops.
In the heart of downtown, nature's around us and surrounds us, and we can have an impact on nature and the natural world.
And to ensure that the Spring Arts Building remains hospitable to these migrating birds, the Audubon Center reached out to Councilmember Jose Wezar's office for help.
Unfortunately, there was a property owner that kind of cut off the chimney for these birds, over 10,000 of them, that nested here. Through the work of my staff member, Martin, we were able to work with the neighboring property owner that allowed their chimney and access to their property to be used. And the birds automatically went in there.
The city's and the Audubon Center's commitment to protect wildlife has made it possible for these Boxer Swifts to reach their final destination and for Angelenos to take in this awe-inspiring sight smack dab in the middle of the hustle and bustle of downtown life. Jeff Chapman of the Audubon Center says the birds could come through our city as late as late October, depending on how the resources are further to the north. To find out other bird-related activities in our region, you can go to birdla.com. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.[455.62]
Motion forthcoming for item 14. Perhaps that could be laid on the desk as well.
Okay, let's do that. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 27, public comment was not satisfied as to that matter. I would just move the report.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
And we don't have any cards in for 27, so that can be considered now.
Okay, well, why don't we just take that one right this minute? Mr. -- we'll just do it with the group. Did I see Bob? Did Bob -- did you want to?
I had an announcement I wanted to make before the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Price?
I wanted to hold 27.
You want to hold 27?
Correct.
Our plan was not to.
Hold it, please.
Okay, so we will now hold 27. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 28 through 30. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Mr. President, yes, we do. We have cards on all of them.
On all of them? Okay, so we'll hold all of them. Mr. Fuentes?
Item 30.
Okay, so and then now 30 by request of Mr. Fuentes. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it's a bit too early for the special meeting. However, on the continuation agenda, item 32 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay. Mr. Parks, you want to hold 32?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Parks wants to hold 32? And Mr. Clerk, 33?
33 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before us.
And we -- Mr. President, we do have cards on 33 as well.
Okay, then we'll just hold that as well. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations or item called special.
Mr. Parks? At this point, you need a few more minutes? Bob, Mr. Bloomingfield, did you have an announcement to make?
Yeah, I wanted to -- thought particularly relevant to make prior to the meeting. Usually we do announcements after. But we had a motion here to -- which I put forward and worked with the ITA and city clerk to make the live status updates of the council available on your mobile devices. And the council passed that. It's happened. It's now enacted. And the reason why it's important to all of you here is we have a packed house. For the first time now, you can go to your mobile device, see where the council is, what votes have been taken, what votes haven't been taken. So if there's something going on here that you're not a part of, that you want to come back when your item is up, you can go to the Homeboy Cafe, get something to drink, and follow along on your cellphone. Councilvote.lacity.org will give you all that information in real time for the first time. That's all publicly available starting today, and it's none too soon because we have a packed house. So I wanted people to know of that option. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. At this point in time, why don't we move Mr. Clerk to item 28? And then after that, we will recognize Mr. Parks. So let's -- we're going to go to item 28, called special by cards. Mr. John Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. See, I brought all these people out with me. They're all with me.
Well, you get good turnout, Mr. Walsh.
They all go to HollywoodHighlands.org all the time. This is item 28. It's always a pleasure to speak in front of you. This concerns the police account, status, and activities of the LAPD for supplemental money. I wish they'd come to Hollywood, where we have the highest number of vehicles stolen in the United States per square mile. I want to say to my friends, pay the $5 if you go to Hollywood because we lose an average of two cars, vehicles stolen, four cars broken into. Why isn't the LAPD doing anything about that? And I always like it when everybody's here, except HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, for the bitter truth. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's prepare members to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Price, we're going to go to 27 quickly. Mr. Walsh, if you'd make your way back, item 27. And then, Mr. Price, I will call on you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. You de-escalate, I de-escalate. You escalate, I escalate. You're de-escalating now. Okay, number 27. You know, this is the most important agenda item of the year. Take a look at what it says. Relative to the first financial status report for fiscal year 2013, 2014. And I'm telling you, they've cooked the books. But even when they cook the books, this city has $2 billion debt just to repair the streets that's sitting there. They take it off the books. This city is in bad, bad financial. And the good news bears up here are going to tell you they're in great shape. They're not in great shape. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org. And incidentally, all the money you're going to have to spend on the sexual harassment settlement suits is going to bankrupt you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to strike recommendation 13 from the report, please.
Did you -- well, I'll go to Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion for approval of the FSR. And with that amendment, I'd move approval of the FSR as amended, as indicated by Mr. Price.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that said, let's prepare to vote on this item.
Mr. President, if we could hold consideration of that item for just a few moments, there seems to be some clarification needed on the --
Well, let's take one minute. Mr. Clerk, come and talk to me.
Mr. President, if I can just clarify, it's --
Go right ahead.
Delete item recommendation 13 from the CAO's report.
Okay, and for clarification, sir, how does that relate to the Budget and Finance Committee report? Which item is that?
Let's just hold the matter. We'll talk about it. We'll bring it back, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
I want you to address the chair. Come here. Mr. Parks, are you ready at this time? Okay, now we will defer to Mr. Parks for presentation.
Colleagues, today we're here to honor the 2013 Empowerment LA awardees. The winners of this process were selected by the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners at their special meeting on September 9. They received a total of 45 nominations for projects that is simplify the mission of the neighborhood councils to engage in local stakeholders with government and make government more accountable and responsive to the needs of the community. It's important to acknowledge these neighborhood councils play an important role in our communities as they work to engage community members and work with the city to address local needs. Recognizing these neighborhood councils for the outstanding work that they do and applauding their commitment will only enhance positive perceptions of their work while providing more community engagement and sharing best practices and encouraging high standards. There is so much work going on across the neighborhood council system that should be duly noted, and to recognize the exemplary efforts of the winners of the 2013 Empowerment LA Awards is another testament of the great contribution of the neighborhood council system. Therefore, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the 10 2013 Empowerment LA recipients. And the first one, we'd like to ask Council District One to come up and to acknowledge their historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks?
Mr. Sadio? The outdoor movie nights at the Highland Park Recreation Center serve as a great family-friendly event for the community. Small business mixer provided Highland Park's businesses an opportunity to network and share ideas. The candidate forums encourage civic participation amongst community members. The outreach strategy through social media is also engaging a newer generation of activists in the community, increased presence in the community. This all comes from the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. We're very, very proud of them. You want me to come up and join them?
We have the neighborhood council come join.
Yes. Where's Monica? Ever-present Monica, where are you? There she is. Hector, is he here? All right, Hector. And Aaron Sacedo. All right. So I'm very proud, Mr. President, of this neighborhood council, their initiative. They're very organic. They're very authentic. They really reflect of Highland Park today and its future. They've done a great job, particularly this movies and helping us some of the cleanup and the other stuff. We've quickly woven them into our outreach strategies, and they are part and parcel of everything we do to serve our district. And so I want to just acknowledge them and applaud you.
Thank you.
And we have a certificate for you. Go right ahead and say something, please.
Oh, I just want to thank everybody for helping us out. And again, the previous council and Mr. Sadio as well as Wezar, he's also part of our -- we're also in his district. Highland Park is broken up into two districts. And again, I just want to thank all of the board members, Hector, Araceli, Gretchen, Aaron. They are -- we are really a team, so they've made this happen. It's not one person. It's a team effort. Thank you.
Congratulations. Give them another round of applause. Mr. Parks, is Mr. Buscaino next or?
He is next.
Mr. Buscaino?
He's next to honor the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. It's a great honor to recognize our San Pedro, Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council for their efforts in raising awareness on youth employment in our district and beyond. It was an honor to work with the neighborhood council in promoting the youth employment fair. We had it at San Pedro High School, the John O'Ging campus. And this is the third year? Their second year in teaching our youth and preparing them for employment, how to dress for an interview, how to write an essay, and getting them prepared for employment once they graduate high school. I want to recognize the president of the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council, Ray Regalado, to say a few words. Ray, come on up.
I'd like to thank all the support that we received from Councilman Buscaino's office in being able to put this important event on. If I can say that our intent is to prepare young people for employment, and we actually had young people get jobs from this thing. So we're hoping that our next effort is going to be bigger, and we're going to get more people employed, but very much so get them prepared for what's coming up next in their lives. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Will you go and take them to the back? Yes, sir. Come on back. Come on back.
I'll leave you back here. Our next would ask Council District 12, that will represent the North Ridge West Neighborhood Council.
I'm not sure if they made it down here yet or not. I am the furthest from City Hall, and it's a trek, and there's a lot of traffic. I know they're on their way if they're not here yet. But I will thank them publicly in any event. And the North Ridge West Neighborhood Council, like many of the neighborhood councils we've got, their volunteer efforts are extraordinary, donating their time, their skill sets, their resources, their network, organizing community events, coordinating public education campaigns, and developing new and exciting programs for the community. This neighborhood council is extremely unique in what they've done, in fact, and truly deserving of this recognition. For the past three years, if you can imagine this, every Thursday, rain or shine, no matter what the weather, without fail, they've conducted a weekly cleanup along the public right-ofways. They've actually gone out in the streets and swept gutters, picking up leaves, debris, off sidewalks, weed abatement on parkways, trimming overhead branches, all on behalf of the community. With all this discussion about parkways today that we're going to have, it's fitting to recognize the North Ridge West Neighborhood Council for their efforts in cleaning up the community and beautifying the community. Their consistent cleanup efforts have also been a great example about how our city can partner with neighborhood councils. The tools are provided by the Office of Community Beautification, arborists from the Urban Forestry providing tree care advice, coordinating the Bureau of Sanitation to pick up 30-plus bags of trash and debris every single week, working with our street use investigators to report illegal dumping and reduce blight, and so much more. So I'd like to thank them, their entire board. Their cleanup efforts have launched North Ridge Sparkle, where all the businesses now have gotten together to promote it as well and put signs up to clean up in front of their businesses. And it's inspired a lot of other neighborhood councils to do the same. I'd also like to thank Reseda and recognize them. And I know Bob's going to be up, I believe, to talk about Reseda Neighborhood Council. We do share a portion of Reseda. And I'd like to congratulate two neighborhood councils for winning this in my district, and thank Mr. Parks for bringing all them forward as well. Thank you very much.
Our next, we'd ask Mr. Weston to come up and honor the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Development Council.
Okay, you know what, Mr. Labans? So if I could have Soro and Empowerment Congress West meet me at the podium. You brought my photographer? Thank you, Mr. President and members. I really have to thank Mr. Parks for overseeing this. I think it's important that we recognize all of the good work that so many of our neighborhood councils do in this city. So first, I want to chat a moment about Empowerment Council West that I recently inherited. The relationship that we have cultivated over these past several months has been fantastic. I have visited this neighborhood council on three occasions, and I think I owe you one more visit. But what a lot of people don't know is that they were instrumental in working with other neighborhood councils in dealing with a situation that many of us thought was going to be simple but was really challenging, and that was to move the Space Shuttle from the airport area to its current and final stop. So they're the ones that worked with other neighborhood councils and cut deals where for every tree we would cut down, we replace it with four. If it weren't for their good work, I don't believe that our community would have benefited as much as I believe it will because of the work of these individuals. So could we please give them a round of applause? And I would like to present you with a certificate recognizing you for all of the outstanding work that you've done. Again, members, acknowledge them. They are a great neighborhood council. I'm glad to have them in the district I'm blessed to represent. Empowerment Congress West.
Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Okay, now, as you can see, not only am I joined by a neighborhood council that I've had the pleasure to work with since the day that I was elected, but I'm also joined by the individual that I share this neighborhood council with, Mr. Corretts. I will not ask them to select one of us as their favorite. We are joint favorites. We are joint favorites of Soro, and it's been a pleasure to work with Paul in trying to help Soro, one of the most forward-thinking neighborhood councils, at least in the area that I represent. Whenever the Council District 10 has needed anything, they have been there and partnered with us. And I could run off a long list, but one thing I do want to mention is the movies in the park that we have every year, that they have helped sponsor, they have helped pay for. But they're smart. Every event they do, they use it to try to increase the ranks of the neighborhood council. And I'm just blessed to have them. Whenever there's an issue in the district, you can quickly call them together, and they're there to try to help you make things better. I'm going to ask Mr. Corretts if he'd like to say a few words, because if I didn't ask him that, he'd elbow me off the mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize Soro, which is a combination of several of our neighborhoods in the area that I grew up and went to school in, Palms, Beverlywood, Pico Robertson. They've done an amazing job, and they've really created sort of a brand for the area, which I think has been important to try and bring up the area. They've done a tremendous festival. They've done banners. They've done a lot of great things to unify this neighborhood. And so in recognition, I wanted to present this to Doug Fitzsimmons, the president of this organization, and thank all of you for your great work.
There's Doug. Okay, now, I also want to say something about Doug. I believe Doug has been the leader of this council, I think, almost ever since I was elected. He's always here. He was just here a few weeks ago when we had the -- brought in all of the neighborhood councils. Terry Gones in the back, who lives in my district, has been an influential member on the council. But Doug is the kind of leader that the community loves, Soro loves. So Doug, what they wanted me to do is not only present you with a certificate of recognition for Soro, but they thought that based on your extraordinary service, that we should have one specifically for you. And Marge knows where she's going to hang it. So thank you, Mr. Parks. Thank you, everyone. Give it up for Soro and Empowerment Council West. Thank you.
Our next presenter would be CD 3 for the Reseda Neighborhood Council.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If I could ask the Reseda Neighborhood Council folks to come up with me? I am really pleased to present the Reseda Neighborhood Council with the Empower LA Award. It is a very vital and amazing neighborhood council, and I'm just thrilled that they can have this award. You know, in 2011, they were discussing some of the economic problems that the entire region was impacted by, and particularly Reseda has been really hit hard by the economy. And after researching several successful small business development efforts across the country, they launched on their own the spend $25 on the 25th and Reseda program, which caught the attention of Citywide Shop L.A. program and American Express, both of which then partnered with them to create Shop Reseda. In conjunction with these efforts, the Shop Reseda discount card was launched at a national news conference and now includes over 200 local business partners. Just a great example of when people get their heads together and say, we've got a problem, a community problem in our district, we're going to solve it together and find solutions. We're not going to wait for the outside world to solve our problems. The concept of shopping local has successfully encouraged a lasting sense of community pride and spirit, as well as encouraging more participants in Reseda's local economy to engage in the neighborhood council process and in the greater city of Los Angeles. I've known and worked with the Reseda Neighborhood Council for many years, from my days in the Assembly even before then. In fact, just this Monday, I was speaking with the neighborhood council as part of just the regular process of reaching out to neighborhood councils. The Reseda Neighborhood Council has been, for many years, the gold standard in Los Angeles for neighborhood councils. And this award not only reflects that, but it is well-deserved. And so I want to congratulate all of you here in the Reseda Neighborhood Council. I see I have Kevin Taylor, Fran Piazza, and Hank Trixelo all here, and I want to present to you -- I have certificates for all of the neighborhood council members, but I want to give you guys yours right here. Kevin?
Thank you. Uh-oh. I think you got the executive orders. Let me and Fran get the --
All right, and Fran, I'm going to give you the Reseda Neighborhood Council one. So stand here, we'll do a picture. Great. And we can go to the back and do some pictures. Thank you very much. Want to make a quick comment? Yes, and Kevin, if you're the president of the Reseda Neighborhood Council, if you would make a few quick comments, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bloomingfield. I want to say thanks to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners for recognizing us and for you guys having us here today. Especially want to make a comment about the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment or Empower LA for being such great support to us, and we get such excellent support. I also want to thank all of my fellow community advocates here in this room. It's great to see council chambers full of people who care about their communities. I want to encourage all of you to join your neighborhood councils.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm going to substitute for Councilman Wezar. We'd like to have the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council come up at this time to receive their honor. Okay, they're going to be honored today. This charge group has had a string on the public policy successes, most notably the opening of the Spring Street Park between Fourth and Fifth Street, as well as two parklets along the same corridor. And what is so great is that they are working with all of the populations in downtown. For example, organizing a high-level town hall on the TB outbreak of a few months ago, an ongoing Skid Row residents-led cleanup campaign to address needs of Skid Row. They're helping vulnerable homeless populations the most powerful ways through direct engagement, involvement, and empowerment. We have their certificates. Who's the president?
I am.
Okay. Why don't you come up?
Well, I am sorry that Jose Wezar can't be here today because he has been a wonderful help to us with all of these projects. I know he's got some family issues now that are keeping him away, but I thank all of you for this. We really try. We really try to get some things done, and we can't do it if we're not partnered with you. I will just say what I always say, and that is to everybody who's not involved with your neighborhood council, don't stand around waiting for the city to do what you want it to do. Get out there and make sure it gets done.
Thank you. Let me do this as we have for the fourth team. And if you go up, we're going to go in the back and take pictures, but I've got to do three more presentations. Be like that. Thank you very much. And then what I'd like to do now is ask... We have three neighborhood councils from the Eighth District and like to ask Park Mesa Heights Community Council, the Empowerment Congress Central Area Neighborhood Development Council, and the Empowerment Congress North Area Neighborhood Development Council to come up at this time.
Let's give them a round of applause, and congratulations to you, Mr. Parks and the Eighth District, three great neighborhood councils.
Let me go through just a brief assessment of their accomplishments. I'm proud to announce that three of the Council District Eight Neighborhood Councils, Park Mesa, the Empowerment Congress of Central, Empowerment Congress North, are among the 2013 Empower L.A. Award winners in the South Region and received their awards at the Congress of Neighborhood Councils on September the 28th. The South Area worked together on a joint project regarding the space shuttle endeavor coming to Los Angeles. They created a space shuttle task force and mitigated the negative impact on the historic event in the neighborhood, spearheading negotiations that reduced the number of trees to be cut down by hundreds and reached the agreement that included four trees replaced in each of the 250 trees cut in the development of both the park and the Tree Master Plan. South lost $400,000 for tree trimming, 1,000 feet of linear sidewalk repair, 10 scholarships per year for five years, the North, the Neighborhood Council Area Youth to attend the Science Center programs, and five professional developments from teachers in South L.A. within the next three years. We have the... Let me do that, miss. And so we'd like to have Mr. Thomas to come up for High Park to speak, and then we have the presidents of the other two.
Good morning. I just want to thank the council for inviting us here this morning and empower the Empowerment Congress. And I really like to thank our board members. We have a good board, and we were able to work together with other neighborhood councils. I appreciate working with them. We can be able to accomplish many more things. Thank you.
Hello. I want to... I'm with the Empowerment Congress North Area. I want to take the opportunity to thank Councilwoman Bernard Parks and the City Council for this recognition. We are located where the 10 and the 110 meet around University Park, Exposition Park. And again, we also, I want to echo, encourage you to join your neighborhood council. We really need to make sure that we, you know, have our voices heard. And thank you again. Thank you all to my colleagues.
On behalf of Empowerment Congress Central, we'd like to say thank you for recognizing us on our accomplishments as we work together as a team. We'd like to thank the council and our Councilman Parks and the Empowerment Done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to just say thank you to all the neighborhood councils, and we certainly wanted to honor them, even though they've received their awards at a prior event. But before we close it down, I'd like to ask two of our neighborhood commissioners come up, Ms. Mack and Ms. Grant, and also ask Gracie Liu, our general manager, to come up at this time.
Can we just give one more round of applause to all the great work for neighborhood councils by everybody in the... I'm representing the commission and the staff. I don't know, Gracie, you want to say anything? But I can share, I can say for my fellow commissioners that we feel like we have the best commission because we get to go around the city seeing all of this great work that's happening all the time across the city. And we know that neighborhood councils make a difference, and it's my belief that civic engagement is the key to building a great Los Angeles. And so you've seen the best of the best here, and our goal is to really share those best practices and support neighborhood councils in being the best they can be so that we can realize our greatness as a city. And so with that, I just want to thank Councilmember Parks and the rest of you. I mean, this is so beautiful today. When we started the awards last year, our goal was to raise the visibility and to get neighborhood councils a recognition for all the work that they're doing. And so, you know, I just can't think of a better and more fitting way for them to be acknowledged by the council people that they're working with. And so I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for my fellow commissioners for taking the time this morning to recognize all of the hard work that neighborhood councils are doing, that these particular neighborhood councils are doing in their neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Parks, if I could interrupt for one minute. Mr. Kocorian wanted to say a few words, and then we'll go back.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just briefly, I love these awards, and I just wanted to thank Chairman Parks and, of course, our great commissioners on Bonk and general manager, Gracie Liu. This demonstration that we've had today of the great service of these neighborhood councils that are receiving these awards is representative of the work of the unsung heroes of 95 neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles. And it's important that everybody who's here on other issues, I think, understands the work that our neighborhood councils put in. Because just a few years ago, just an eye blink ago, really, this city was in danger of being torn apart by secession movements in the San Fernando Valley, in San Pedro, in Hollywood, people who felt like they were disenfranchised from their city government, that City Hall wasn't listening to them. And the neighborhood council movement and the 95 neighborhood councils who've been formed since then give voice to our neighborhoods and our communities. It's a vehicle for activism that really works in engaging neighborhoods in partnership with city government. So if you want to have a say in what City Hall does, if you want to have a say in how your neighborhoods are represented here in this council chamber, one of the best ways you can do it is by getting involved in your neighborhood councils as a candidate for a board or just as a stakeholder going out and supporting the work that's being done by the boards of your neighborhood councils. So I urge you to go to the Empower L.A. website, find out more about getting involved in your neighborhood council, and thank you all for being here and helping us to celebrate the great leadership that we're getting in all of our communities through our neighborhood council movement.
I would just like to say thank you to everybody who's been working in support of the neighborhood council system. I would recommend anybody who can hear this to please attend at least one of your community's neighborhood council meetings so that you can share with your community the things that your neighborhood council is working on. And our elections are coming up, so we're looking for new people, and we would love to have you join our neighborhood councils. The website for the department is empowerla.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and again, congratulations. Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding that everything has been sorted out on item 27, so if you could please make an announcement, we can quickly vote on that. In fact, I'll defer to Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I need to restate my motion on the FSR, which I'm happy to do. I would move approval of the recommendations of myself and Mr. Blumenfield that are represented in the committee report, with the exception that recommendation number one should be amended to read as follows. Approve the recommendations of the city administrative officer, CAO, contained in the first FSR dated October 17, 2013, attached to the council file, except for recommendation number 13 therein. That would be my motion, and I would ask approval.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you need to respond to that, or can I just move forward with the vote?
No, sir.
Okay, let's vote on this item. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That passes. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to bring up all of the commissioners at this point.
Very good, sir. Those would be items nine, 10, 11, and 12. Nine, 10, 11, and 12, and you do have cards on item 10, sir.
Okay, if you could come forward, and before I call on Mr. O'Farrell, I'm going to ask for Mr. John Walsh to come forward and Mr. Herman to please come forward. Mr. Herman, are you passing?
No.
Okay, then I need you to start making your way down here. You're right after Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, I believe your card and Mr. Herman's card is on item 10.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I have no objection to any of these candidates. I did have objection to one candidate several years ago, who later was found with kiddie porn and had to resign. You remember that?
Let's stay on this group, Mr. Walsh.
See how he hassles me?
That's not a hassle.
I just want you up here. I'm talking about these candidates and the issues, and you are... Remember, you escalate, I escalate. Herman, which is your real name, Herman, I want to point out, as far as this candidate is concerned, Gregory Bettinelli, that in order to get this job, and everybody knows it, it's been in the media, he had to sign a personal letter of resignation, undated, and give it to the mayor. And anytime you get one inch away from what the mayor wants, if you don't play a good Monica Lewinsky to the mayor, he has a letter, and so did the previous mayor, Vieragosa, and so did the previous mayor, and you have to go back to a black mayor who ran the city and gave us rent control before you, when you didn't have that. They are all puppets. Their letter... Now, if I'm wrong, you can tell them that you did not sign a letter. They have it in the file here. The mayor has it in a file, and the second you say anything, he takes it out, he dates it, and you are finished. So please don't believe that they have any terms or anything like that. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org and see the picture of the woman who is suing for sexual harassment. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Herman. Did you have a... Daniel? Okay. I need to find Mr. Gus's card. Yes, Mr. Herman?
Good morning. Interesting morning while I was up there while the commissioners were being appointed. Although I don't have time to comment on that because there were more important things about tobacco and public comment. But anyways, let's get into this. The mayor needs to make the most appropriate candidate available for this city. As we're all aware that today, most of us representing are yellow color for elephants. We will save an elephant, I hope.
Stay on this subject.
All right.
Which is item 10.
Sorry, Herman. Mr. Herman?
Hey, I'm proud of my name. If you get off the subject again, Mr. Herman's going to make you go sit down.
No problem.
So stay on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. So relative to the mayor's appointment of Mr. Gregory, when the mayor has really taken the initiative to appoint this commission or person, we hope that he takes his job seriously. Thank you. Ethically, and for the purpose, as you mentioned upstairs, for the children, because I'm about children. I love teaching children as much as you would like to teach in the library area. So expand your hours. Do good proposals for your grants, whether it's federal or state. People with disabilities would enjoy those accommodations if you can make personnel available to them, to serve them. And then again, we have the public here who would like to be informed when you have your postings up, that it's available in one particular spot, that we could be able to reach it and read it clearly without all this commotion of paperwork piled upon paper with wrong dates and old dates. And so again, thank you for being here, and sorry for the criticism, if there was any, but welcome to L.A.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Gus, you must have placed or put the wrong number of the wrong item, but I...
I have an extra one. I appreciate it.
Just come on forward on item 10. Which item?
I guess 10, then.
10 is fine.
The zoo commissioner.
10 is fine.
You know, it's interesting today...
Nine, I guess.
Is this the zoo?
Okay, you speak. We'll figure it out.
So we're going to be talking today about bull hooks and all sorts of abuse with respect to circuses in Los Angeles. And on the other hand, we're talking about zoo commissioners today. And the concern is, on one hand, we're doing the right thing for elephants, but where's the public discourse about how elephants are treated in the zoo? You know, that's like saying it's okay to punch an elephant, but not kick an elephant. And I'm sure these are very good commissioners, and I hope that there can be some public discourse about what we're going to do about the elephants, who many of us believe are mistreated in the zoo by mere fact that they live there. I also wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Walsh said with respect to doing what the mayor wants or doing what Mr. Coretz wants. I'm reading an email from Paul Coretz regarding another commissioner, and Mr. Coretz didn't like what a commissioner was doing, and he referred to her as a moron and an idiot. And I have that in case the deputy city attorney wants to see it. But if you don't do what these people ask of you, they'll call you morons and idiots, and that's exactly what Paul Coretz did. More on that. These are probably very good people, but I'd like to hear how about dealing with the abuse of elephants in the zoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel? So that's the last speaker card on these issues. Let me defer at this point to Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, in my committee, Arts, Parks, Health, Aging in the River, we had the great privilege of hearing from four talented, accomplished, very altruistic individuals who are prepared to volunteer their time to make our city better. So I'd like to introduce to my colleagues today appointee from the Board of Zoo Commissioners, Mr. Mark Mitchell. I'd like to introduce from the Board of Library Commissioners, Mai Lassiter, Josefa Salinas, and Gregory Bettinelli. And I personally want to thank you for stepping up to serve. I also want to give a shout out to two of my former colleagues who are helping corral all these commission appointments, and that is Mr. Ryan Carpio, Ryan, and Eduardo Soriano-Hewitt. So good work on the mayor's office there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Labange, quickly.
Library commissioners, 75 library branches, is that right, Mr. Sabo? Throughout the city, there's a great exhibit at Central Library on music of L.A. and the wonderful job our libraries, our information centers. And I want to thank you at the zoo for the work you've done for all people, young and old, especially the children, to become connected to nature. All of you got a great opportunity to make a difference. Thank you. I ask for an eye vote.
At this time, I want to thank you in advance. Members, it's time for us to vote on this item unless there's an objection. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations. You are all approved.
And, Mr. President, that was approving the Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee reports for those matters.
Wonderful. Fourth with. We're going to go to item one at this time. Mr. Clerk, I have some cards on that. I've got Mr. Sax... I've got Mr. Sax, Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh, and I believe Kenneth Bonds, an attorney. So if I could have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sax. Mr. Walsh passes. Arnold Sax. Mr. Herman, come forward. Mr. Bonds. Bonds, if you're here. Arnold, good morning.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Arnold Sax. And again, with the liens program that the city has in effect and with all the documentation, all the discussion you've had about neighborhood councils, maybe they can assist you in this lien program by going around. I've asked often about why you have inspectors going around looking at homes when they don't look at houses that are in foreclosure. So maybe you could have the neighborhood council members look at homes that aren't in foreclosure, do an inventory on the sidewalks that need, that are in disrepair.
Mr. President, this is an item about liens for unpaid taxes.
Okay, Arnold, just get back on the lien. Just get back on the subject.
You had several speakers come up here and go off topic.
Arnold, please, no. And I tried to bring them all back. I'm trying to bring you back. Go on, go back to the topic.
I lost my time. I'm not going to use more than one minute. But that's the need for resources in the city instead of the city attorney.
Thank you. I don't see Mr. Herman. Bonds, Mr. Bonds, okay. And you'll be followed by Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kenneth Bonds. I represent Infinity Auto Park. That's items one, E, F, G, and H. We've just received a total amount that is due to the city for not only these four items, but also there are additional audits that have been performed on Infinity's parking lots. We've received the total amount that's due and we've just opened up dialogue with the Office of Finance and the city attorney, Mr. Frank Roscoe. And we're trying to come to a settlement. We're trying, I'm trying to get a number from my client and make an offer of settlement to the city attorney and the Office of Finance. I'd appreciate if we could continue this another couple of weeks so that I can get our settlement offer in and hopefully get this whole thing resolved.
Thank you, sir. So why don't I bring up Mr. Herman at this point and let me try to find the members that represent the area, Mr. Bonds, where you have concerns. Okay, and then we'll let you know what they've decided. Mr. Herman.
Good morning. And again, examples of what liens really do for the city of Los Angeles. The city, the county might put a tax lien on someone's property, maybe yours, maybe your neighbors, maybe everyone in the city of Los Angeles has a lien at this point. So the city and the county did, did buy their effects by imposing a tax on your property. So if you need to borrow against it or sell it, it is a result that you never paid them on the lien, Dion. And along with the interest and the penalties, right? Penalties, these are what liens are in the city of Los Angeles. And during the redemption period, what happens during a lien? A tax lien imposes the law for what? A tax payment. A tax payment at a time of a recession and the hardships of thousands of your constituents that the city, this city has neglected its negligence on these liens. Because you hear the stories of people that come in here and say, "Look at this lien now. Now what does the building and safety want me to do? I've tried correcting it." I'm going back, Dion. So as a result, or the failure to pay the income tax or taxes is a result, as Mr. Arnold Sax says, you go into foreclosure. Thank you. Save my time.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker to Mr. Bonds. It's my understanding that those offices want to move forward. So that's what we will do at this point in time. So, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now we're going to move to item eight. And item eight was held special by Cards, Kevin Brogan, Mark Spillo. I believe this is constituent or whatever this is, Mr. Herman, I believe it to be you. And Joseph, Joseph from the law firm, you're going to have to come up and help me with your last name. Pass on that from Mr. Herman. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
I'm Mark Spillo from Spillo Worldwide here in Los Angeles, Mr. President and members. I am president of Spillo Worldwide. We manufacture and distribute beauty products to over 40 countries around the world. Spillo is a decidedly Los Angeles company. We have found, we were founded as a two-person shop in the Wilshire District in 1942 and relocated to the Arts District more than 30 years ago. We employ 80 people. We want to remain headquartered in Los Angeles and that's why I'm here on this item. The Spillo buildings are located on three parcels, two we own and one we lease. We understand that one of our owned parcels and the leased parcel are needed for the Sixth Street Bridge project. It is not clear, however, that our second owned parcel located at 585 South Santa Fe is necessary for the bridge project. As recently as last month, the Bureau of Engineering said it could not yet determine if the 585 property was needed for the project because the plans for the bridge had not been finalized. At the same meeting, the Bureau asked us to submit an offer for the city to lease the 585 property during construction. We have submitted two below-market offers and to date have received no response back. I do not see how the city can condemn the 585 property without documenting that the property is needed for the Sixth Street Bridge project. My strong preference is that the 585 property not be condemned so that my company's headquarters after bridge construction return to where it is now. I would hate for the city to take this parcel, see us relocate to another city, only to find that the property is not needed by the city and city employment, business tax, and key employment base in the Arts District has all been lost.
Thank you. Okay, if you could just come up and identify yourself.
Yes, my name's Kevin Brogan, B-R-O-G-A-N. I'm condemnation counsel for Spillo Worldwide. Before the city council can adopt a resolution of necessity to condemn private property, it must find that the property is necessary for the project. To date, staff has failed to indicate in any way, shape, or form how the 585 South Santa Fe property is necessary for the Sixth Street Bridge project. We acknowledge that the 589 and the Sixth Street properties are within the drip line of the bridge and therefore needed to be acquired. But the 585 South Santa Fe property is not, and there is no reason set forth in the city council information or anything staff has provided that would indicate why they want to take the 585 South Santa Fe property. Without, if the 585 South Santa Fe property, which is 4F on your list of properties to be taken, if that property is not taken, Spillo can relocate back to the Arts District and maintain employment. We think it's very important for the city to understand that and we oppose the condemnation of the 585 South Santa Fe property. Thank you.
So Joseph Schwarr, how close was I with the last name?
That's pretty close. Everybody can pronounce Schwarzenegger, right? It's basically the same thing, just cut it off before the Z there.
Gotcha.
Schwarr, Joseph Schwarr. I'm counsel for Stover Seed Company. Stover is at 1407, 1411, 1415, Sixth Street and 598 Mateo. I've put together a little prop here of the take area 1F of this project. We came before the Public Works and Gangs Reduction Committee earlier this month and pointed out that this little parcel here, number 5164007002, isn't really necessary for the project. The bridge project is going down here. We understand these may be necessary. This one, no necessity at all. Staff at that committee hearing came up with a, with a use of this during project construction to have access to the other parcels on which construction's taking place. There is no take of these properties. There's no take of these properties. There's other takes down here. What we're saying is this is not necessarily a fee take. This is a temporary construction easement at most. After the project's over, the take area should look like that. Stover Seed should have this parcel in its possession afterwards. It's not necessary for the project to take a fee take there. Temporary construction easement would provide all the, all the access that's needed. Also, taking this away from Stover Seed, that reeks a large injury on my client with actually no benefit to the city from doing so. It would actually likely be cheaper just to take a temporary construction easement where you're paying rent rather than paying for the full fee of this parcel. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Labange.
President, members, I'm very familiar with this location. I believe it's on the west side of Santa Fe Avenue, north of the street cleaning underneath the Sixth Street Bridge, right? And basically, this is a lay-down yard. Who's here for the engineering bureau? I think we should listen to those people because it convinced me that it seems like an overreach. And how many times recently on projects have we purchased land to make it more convenient for us and yet then it becomes vacant? I look at San Fernando Road right by Avenue 20. There is a, we did a construction job for sanitation. We took out a bunch of businesses that never came back. They got jobs there. We should listen to it. Are you with the Bureau of Engineering? Anybody here to stand up for this? Tell me why we should do this, please. Is this a convenience for the construction? Or it's a convenience for the construction? So we have a convenience for construction, a convenience for jobs. You have a DWP yard just south of that, a distribution area. There's flatland there. You need a lay-down yard there?
Yes, we do.
Okay, there's other lay-down yards there that you should be more creative. I don't, I know this area well and I'm just impressed with the articulation of the public speakers to stand up. Tell me why you think we should condemn and take away jobs there.
Do you want to take the lead, Tom?
Go ahead.
Alfred Matha from the Bureau of Engineering, I'm the project manager for the project. We also have the city attorney, John Minor, and our real estate chief, real estate officer in the Bureau of Engineering, Udi Jimenez, here. When we've looked at these parcels that are being impacted by the project and the construction of the viaduct, these three parcels in particular are being impacted, as he said, by the structure and the area, we see them as one complete parcel. And that extra area that he's talking about could be used for construction staging, may even be needed for the project as we further develop the design of the project.
But also, you could work around it. If they want to save their property, they'll rent it to you. Is that correct, public speakers?
Rent it.
They'll rent it to you. So how much do we take, members, all the time? I love the fire department. We just supersize our fire stations and take it up land. I love the school district. We've taken a lot of land. The more land we take, the less taxes from property taxes. Can you do it without this land?
No.
You could do it without this land.
Well, we would need some other land. We're, we're, we're only taking what we need for the project.
And I don't know if this is happening between the time the mayor's office has a business development team and jobs team because Mayor Garcetti's jobs, jobs, jobs guy. Have you been able to take hand in hand from the property owner and the business to the new mayor's office?
No. We have not had a discussion with the mayor.
Okay, well, I would rather have them go the full force before they do this. I stand for the Sixth Street Bridge and I think if we take it all out, it doesn't help them and it doesn't help us. So that's where I stand.
Well, it's my understanding, though, Mr. Labange, that the representative of the area wants to move forward on this, but I will give what you said some thought. And right now, I'll defer to Mr. Boots.
Let me just close real quick to ask them to take another run at it because I feel embarrassed and they're probably commenting because you're good people. But I don't see how we treat people that way without an alternative, especially if they want to rent it to us. I'll sit down.
If I, if I may, Mr. President. Earlier in today's council session, we approved item number 15, Mr. Labange. And if I can, part of this item that was approved earlier is a report back from our Economic Development Committee as well as our Budget and Finance Committee on how the businesses that are going to be impacted by this Sixth Street Viaduct replacement project. Ultimately, we do want this, these businesses to remain in the city of Los Angeles. And part of this item, item number 15, that we approved earlier directs both committees to do just that, a report back in 30 days to find another location for these businesses that will be impacted by this project. And you're absolutely right, Mr. Labange. We don't want to displace businesses. This is an issue that came before us early this year with the SKIG project in Wilmington, how we need to continue to be business friendly. And those projects that impact economic development, ultimately, we need to do our part and ensure that we find a location and make every effort we can so that we, these businesses don't get displaced and ultimately impact the jobs. So can you, can you talk on that item?
Yes, sir. Please respond. If you can.
Deputy City Attorney, John Minor. One of the problems before us is that the final design of this Sixth Street Bridge project has not yet been completed. However, the subject properties that have been identified in our report requesting approval of the condemnation ordinance are, are so identified and have been mentioned in the EIR. Both of the public comment speakers have indicated that they understand and recognize that the pieces of their parcels nearest the bridge, there's no doubt that there's requirement for their project there. The only issues that we're talking about are pieces on the backside of the, of the subject parcels. And the city does have the legal authority to also include those backside parcels in the condemnation process under Code of Civil Procedure 1240.120, which allows the city, authorizes the city to take properties which may be necessary for the preservation, attractiveness, safety, and usefulness of the project. It's still too early on to make a final determination how those backside parcels will be, will be required. But it's our best judgment at this time that they will be required for one of the four other tests, that was being attractiveness, safety, preservation, and usefulness of the project. So we would ask the adoption of the ordinance. But we will continue to work with, talk to, negotiate with the owners of the backside parcels to see if accommodations can be reached. Thank you.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Okay, and if we could recognize, okay, Mr. Labange is back at his chair. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Okay, so that issue passes.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, that ordinance will go over for a second read to next Wednesday.
Okay, then we'll, that's fine. We'll deal with it next week, is that?
Yeah, a second read next Wednesday, October 30.
What happened? We had, did we have an incident? Let's recess for a moment. Let's recess for a moment.
Good morning again, everybody. Our guest has been attended to with Los Angeles Fire Captain and firefighter there as well as our police officers as well. And he tripped on that area right there. We're going to keep it clear in the back. If everybody could move in a little bit because there will be a response coming. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 29, called Special for Cards. Again, item 29, called Special for Cards.
Okay, 29, Mr. Labange. We will complete that item. It's called Special by One Card. Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Arnold, Mr. Sax, are you suggesting you had? Okay, then let's vote on this. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourth with, per Mr. Parks. Mr. Caress. I think it's time for us to move forward on the item or on an item that I think has generated a lot of interest. We have a lot of folks here. But I do want to say this before you get started, Mr. Par, I mean, Mr. Caress. It's my understanding that we will be showing a video.
Yes.
And it is not an edited video.
Correct.
So I'm not going to watch it again, so I want to recommend to parents at home that this is pretty graphic. If you don't want your children to look at it once the video goes on, then maybe that's what we should do. Mr. Caress, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. While Los Angeles has strived to become a truly humane city over the years, this can't happen as long as we allow elephants to be dominated and cruelly controlled with the bullhook and circuses and public performances. To let you know how we got here today, a member of the humane community brought this issue to my attention in late 2011. And as a result of compelling evidence presented to me about the harm to elephants from bullhooks, I introduced the motion in early 2012. The Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee heard the motion and a subsequent Animal Services report on the motion in June 2012 and continued the item so the Board of Animal Services Commissioners could weigh in and make recommendations on the feasibility of the issue. In early November, the Board of Animal Services Commissioners submitted a report asking the mayor and the city council to consider seven different regulatory options regarding the use of wild and exotic animals in traveling shows and exhibitions within the city limits. Of those options, the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee met in late November of 2012 and approved three of those recommendations to go forward to the council for consideration. Those recommendations are before you today. I'd like to ask a sergeant to bring us a bullhook. Whoever has that. Thank you. Members of the city council, this is a bullhook. It'll be interesting for you to know that I had to get special dispensation from the city's police department to bring this bullhook into city council today because it's considered a dangerous weapon. It's not only a weapon in these chambers, it's a weapon that is used each and every time a circus trainer works with an elephant in order to compel strict obedience. It'll be interesting for you to know that the bullhook is only effective because the elephant has been taught to associate it with pain and fear through repeated poking and prodding on sensitive parts of the body, sometimes drawing blood. The fear of being hurt when touched by the bullhook, even lightly, compels an elephant to obey commands. They use it to punish elephants for, in Mr. Feld's own words in a handout they gave council members this week, for failing to listen. It's dangerous to believe that a bullhook keeps anyone safe. An angry 9,000-pound elephant is unstoppable except by a hail of bullets. In fact, the more than 150 deaths and injuries caused by elephants in the last two decades happened when people shared the same space with elephants and used a bullhook. I investigated this issue with an open mind. I visited the Ringling Brothers Circus. I walked with the elephants at 3:00 a.m. as they made their way to Staples Center for performances. I saw them behind the scenes. And I later was encouraged by the possibility of a working group to discuss this important issue. However, the opposition canceled and then dropped out from sight, not contacting us from after December of last year. Times are changing. We know so much more now about elephants and their intelligence, sensitivity, and emotional natures. We know that they suffer not only physically but psychologically. That's why elephant sanctuaries and progressive zoos and our zoo in the city of Los Angeles does not allow the use of the bullhook. They have rejected the bullhook, so why would we allow visiting circuses to use these devices? If people really want to see elephants, they can visit the Los Angeles Zoo's Pachyderm Forest exhibit and be assured that our elephants are handled in the most humane way possible without bullhooks. I'm now going to show a video that was mentioned earlier that those of us on the PAU committee watched. I apologize for its graphic nature. The video shows the standard handling of elephants in circuses. These methods have not changed for years. What you see in the video, I believe, is an accurate depiction of elephant management today. So if we could show the video. I think this part doesn't have audio.
Remember, it's silent for like a minute and a half, and then it goes into it.
That's what I'm saying.
Get on, man. Tear that foot off. Sink it in his foot. Tear it off. Make him scream. Oh, good. Dude, your foot. Get him, person. All right, tough. Don't touch him. Hurt him. Hurt him. Don't touch him. Make him scream. I know. If you're scared to hurt him, don't come in his way. So if I say rip his head off, rip his fucking foot off, what does that mean? It's very important to do it, right? You come sit on hard, sit. You let him get there. When he starts squirming too fucking much, both fucking hands. Boom, right into that chin. Sit, and you better back up because his feet should be flying right behind him. And when he fucks around too much, don't grab that leg. You fucking sink that hook and give everything you've got when it's in there, go. Sink that hook in him sometimes. When you hear that screaming, then you know you've got their attention, little fucking bitch. I hear them all. You doing it, or what? Fucking do it, Ken. I'm not going to touch her every fucking time. Okay. She's gonna fucking do what I want. That's just fucking weird.
Mr. Caress, I believe that we've seen more than enough where it relates to this. I'm ready to vote, so let's just go cut straight to the quick.
When I saw this, I saw this video in committee for the first time. When I saw this, after we'd been discussing it and opponents made some arguments, I just said, you have nothing left to say. There's nothing you can say to this. This is how elephants are treated, and we have to bring an end to it. This is not a vote against the circus. The circus is welcome in Los Angeles, just without bullhooks. There are other circuses that have made this change. We hope that as a result of this legislation, eventually, all circuses will have made this change as well. I move that the council adopt recommendation two of the November 26, 2012 Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee report, which is to request the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance prohibiting any public performance-related context, the use of bullhooks, baseball bats, ax handles, pitchforks, and other implements and tools designed to inflict pain for the purpose of training and controlling the behavior of elephants, and that the council receive and file recommendations one and three. And also, I'd like to give a shout out to the folks that are here in support of this legislation and support of elephants. Could you hold up your cards to show? And particularly, I want to give a shout out to Lily Tomlin for all her great work on this issue and protecting elephants.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President members, I also rise to speak in favor of the motion. I applaud the humanitarian efforts of Lily Tomlin and applaud those who are here to help enact this ban. I've worked on matters related to this issue or to issues of cruelty in Sacramento, and you and I well aware of that, in particular, the ban on fragrant. So today, at issue is not a question of initiating the ban. The question is how and when. And so with that, I offer and have spoken to my colleague about a friendly amendment that respects the existing contracts, does not impair those that are in place, does not interfere with also competing values and interests that we talked about. We just heard about the mayor's agenda for jobs, 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 that does not breach our other commitments and values to working men and women, to their families, to the need for them to have reasonable expectations of employment, for them to fulfill their responsibilities to make sure that their children are also cared for in a manner that is humane and just and fair, that these are not competing interests, that these are interests that can be reconciled, that these are interests that must be reconciled, and that we, as the leadership of the city, must do so in a way that's thoughtful, that's considerate of all the parties that are involved in this activity. Yes, we have a vision. We have an idea about what we desire, but we also have a responsibility now and today to do what is doable. And what is doable today is to initiate the ban, but to do so in a way that's considerate and thoughtful about those families who have an interest. And I'm not talking about the audience, but I'm talking about men and women who have livelihoods that are dependent upon their employment with this activity. And so I've offered an amendment that the, was offered by the author. For some reason, it wasn't embraced, but the time is now for that amendment previously offered by the author to be embraced, and that is to go forward with the ban today and to effectuate that ban within three years, no later than three years, so that it does not impair with existing contracts that exist in this city. And with that, I ask that we all move forward to support our honorable colleague, Paul Caress, in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Okay, I rise in full support of Mr. Caress's motion today. The video and others describe the cruelty of this practice. I wanted to share my views, not only on the cruelty of it, but also on the economics because we hear a lot of claims in the last few days about the economics which strain credulity. Doing the right thing by animals nearly always turns out to have fewer economic trade-offs than defenders of the status quo might argue. Ringling Brothers is a longstanding and viable business that has undergone plenty of changes and improvements over the years, and I for one have their confidence in their ability to engage their creativity and live up to their animal welfare claims without resorting to just taking their marvels and going home. Prohibiting the use of bullhook does not prohibit amusement from taking place. This ordinance simply outlaws the use of a device that is known to cause harm. I did a little unscientific survey this morning. I have two very avid circus fans that live in my house. One's four years old and one's seven years old. And I asked them if they would go to a circus if there were no elephants and if the elephants were, if there were elephants and they were treated more humanely. And they said absolutely. My daughter says, oh, her favorite thing is a trapeze. But I have every confidence that most children in this city are similar to my kids and that and that having elephants in the circus treated cruelly is not what brings them there, or having elephants at all is not what brings them there. The zoos have evolved away from using this practice, including our own Los Angeles Zoo. And they're not suffering any adverse consequences as a result. Nearly forty other U.S. municipalities in thirty countries have enacted full or partial restrictions on the use of wild animals in public displays and/or the use of bull hooks. Not a single one has reported an economic loss associated with these humane efforts. I firmly believe that we can do the right thing. We can afford to do the right thing here in Los Angeles by these very sensitive and majestic creatures. And to be clear, if passage of this ordinance leads, as some have warned, to Ringling Brothers pulling up their stakes, that's their choice. But I'm sure that there are safe places to keep elephants in Southern California. I'm sure that we will have amusement, and I have every confidence that they will find a way to provide a circus that doesn't use this practice. So I ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this motion, and I rise in strong support. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, you should consider... No, I didn't. I'm not calling on you. I'm saying you should consider adding clowns in here. Because I have nightmares about clowns now, okay? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Corretts, for all of your work on this. And thank you to members in the audience today for your years of advocacy, for no longer being willing to tolerate animal cruelty or torture implements of any kind. That's where I stand along with you. And I was supportive of this bull hook ban years ago. I think it's high time that the city of Los Angeles catch up with the rest of the world in having a cruelty-free position, that we stand with the city of Barcelona, Bogota, Rio de Janeiro, Sao Paulo, Santiago, Singapore, Buenos Aires, just a sampling of some of the dozens and dozens of world-class cities across the world that don't just ban bull hooks, they ban animals performing in circuses. It is my hope, Mr. President, that someday, Los Angeles will become as enlightened as these cities I mentioned. Right now, we are a follower. But however, we can lead in the United States. We can lead in a cruelty-free, non-negotiable presence for all of our wildlife, exotic animals in the city of Los Angeles. The Los Angeles Zoo has banned the bull hook. That ban is in effect. This is consistent with the city policy on not allowing a Victorian-era torture implement to be applied to the sensitive skin of our elephants. It's cruel and humane, and I would love to see the ban go into effect tomorrow. And I'm not saying that just to get the applause. It's a very emotional issue for me. Anyone who loves animals and gets it understands this. However, the good news is we are banning bull hooks today. It may not go into effect for three years, or leading up to it. And I don't know that we have the support to shorten that timeframe, but I want to say something. Shame on Ringling Brothers for not coming to the table a year ago when you could have, because we would have moved a lot further with this than we are now. But this is an accomplishment, and I want to congratulate everyone for taking part in this. Thank you, and God bless the animals.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you for your remarks. Mr. Sadio, your remarks. And Bob, thank you for your children. Children are amazing tool of information to tell us what's right and what's wrong. Mr. Corretts, because you've always been a champion, I thank you. I'm a big zoo person, because I love parks. I love the experience. And Catherine Doyle, I thank you for your advocacy and all the work that you do. But now we're at a point to do the right thing. So to stand up and support Mr. Corretts in this effort, I call for an I-vote. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, to close.
Well, thank you, and I'm so excited to hear the support from the council. I believe there's a chance we may actually get a unanimous vote for one of the most controversial issues we've taken up. I agree to take in, take as a friendly amendment, a phase-in of three years. And I hope that this...
Okay, if we did this...
I hope that this gives the affected shows ample opportunity to retool their performances and be in compliance. And that's the ultimate goal. There are other circuses, like Circus Vargas, that have recognized the changing times. I'm not sure it'll be as easy with some others. We may have to hit them with a hook a couple times to make it happen. Not literally. But I think the important thing is not the fact that we do it, because just one city is not going to make the big change. Whether it's phased in over a year or three years, the main impact is going to be that we're the first ones to take this step. Because I believe when all circuses make the change is when the tenth big city, or the fifteenth big city does it, and they finally see the writing on the wall, and they can't go anywhere. And this is going to be the first big step. They either get rid of the implement and come into compliance, or they probably will not be able to have elephants in the circus. Because as they say, they need this to control them. There's no humane way to do it. And I ask for your I-vote in taking a big step in making Los Angeles a more humane city.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. I disagree with you on one point. I believe in this country, the winds in this country blow from the west to the east. So I think what we do today will have a huge effect on this country and maybe in the world as well. Okay, with that said, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Well, here, let me respond to the public comment. I thought that that had been done when I stepped out. The public comment where it relates to this item has already been satisfied in committee. The amendment falls within, the city attorney is comfortable. We're getting ready to have a big win. This is a very important first step. Let us take this very first positive step. With that, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
This passes. Congratulations to all of you. Mr. Clerk, again, I want to thank everyone for coming. Mr. Clerk, we want to recess this regular meeting, go into the special meeting. So if we could start the roll, we want to deal with item thirty-one.
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonnabus, Ciano, Sadio, England, Arfante, Suezar, Corres, Corian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Thirteen members present and a quorum, Mr. President. Item thirty-one is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, that item is before us.
Mr. President, we do have cards on that matter.
Okay, on this matter, what we will do is we will... We will do, Mr. City Attorney, one minute per person. We will slow down a bit as we let people exit the council. Okay, now let's keep it down. Keep it down. Keep it down. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Okay, on this item, we're gonna start out with... And sergeants, if you could help them exit. We're gonna start out with Mr. Arnold Sachs. Dan, I think it's Daniel Allen. Is that Regina Clemente? Please come forward. Please come forward. Please. Just identify yourself and go.
Hi, my name's Regina Clemente. I'm with St. John's Well, Child and Family Center. We serve over seventy thousand patients in South Los Angeles every year through eleven health centers. And we are in strong support of legalizing edible gardening of all forms. Earlier this year, we began to work with our patients to plant edible gardens in the parkways. As many of you know, in South L.A., we have disproportionately high rates of diabetes and obesity that we see firsthand every day, and shamefully low access to healthy food. And so these edible gardens have begun to give our patients and community immediate daily access to fresh fruits and vegetables, literally just outside their doorstep. And so this is a huge way to both get people access to healthy food, build community as neighbors are talking to each other about nutrition. And we're just excited to be able to expand this throughout our community. So thank you so much for everyone's work to move this forward, and you should come by and see our tomatoes and peppers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs, followed by Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you, and thank you very much for the one minute of time in the special meeting.
You're wasting it, so come on, Mr. Sachs.
I just heard you talk about how you...
Stay on the item.
This is an ordinance. Are you looking at...
Stay on the item. It is still an item, so talk directly to it.
Residential Parkway landscaping guideways. You have had an ordinance before the city council or the city committees or whatever you want to talk about for three or four years. So how you all of a sudden decided to come to the point on correcting this city ordinance to allow for, and again, the definition of parkways versus the right-of-way, versus the sidewalk, versus the curb, versus the street? And yet, we just heard you pass an ordinance that's gonna take three years to go into effect. So, I mean, it all depends on how you say tomato or tomato. That's part of gardening.
Thank you very much. Do I have, is it Daniel or Danielle? Allen? Mr. Mark Glassock? If you, Mark, come forward, I'll just start reading names. Claire Fox. I believe Mr... I thought I had a card on Mr. Walsh. Okay, yes, sir.
First of all, thank you to the first responders that helped one of our friends earlier today. Good morning, council members. My name is Mark Glassack, and I'm a policy analyst with community health councils. Today is a great day for L.A., a great day for good food, and a good step forward for health equity in the city of Los Angeles. CHC would like to thank you for the work to support edible landscaping and its impact on healthy food access and green space development, especially in areas like South L.A., East L.A., Pacoima, and Wilmington. I would also like to thank city staff and departments. Today, I would like to speak briefly about the second portion of the edible landscapes motion concerning vacant city-owned property and what steps we can take to move forward for a healthier, greener future. As you're well aware, city-owned vacant property is a tremendous untapped resource for the development of new green space, such as parks, urban farms, and gardens, which are viable economic development strategies. CHC's laopenacres.org and the L.A. Neighborhood Land Trust Transforming Inner-City Lost Lots Project wish to help you in this endeavor to utilize these resources more effectively.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. You should come back and during general public comment on another day, you'll have your time to really go into this. If you could come forward and identify yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. Am I on?
Yes.
Council members, I'm Claire Fox. I work for the Los Angeles Food Policy Council. Just want to say thank you for moving forward this edible parkways motion with this policy. Families can now have access to fresh fruits and vegetables right outside their door. And while we know parkway spaces definitely vary in size, every little bit of land can count for residents that live in neighborhoods with limited green space and also with a dearth of healthy food options. So now the power of the parkway has been freed for food-growing and beautiful gardens. We've already seen neighbors rallying around these gardens. And this free access to fresh food can really supplement food budgets for struggling families, as well as promote food security and healthy eating, while also reconnecting to where our food comes from. And we also want to say, council members, that communities are being empowered through your efforts to transform their neighborhoods into healthy food hubs. As the L.A. Food Policy Council, we want to work with you to implement this so that residents have success. Council President Wesson, I would like to commend and acknowledge you, in particular, for your leadership. Your staff has been very diligent in working on this, and so we're so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's Ed Johnson from my staff, who was the quarterback on this. John Parker. John Walsh. John Walsh passes. Florence, I think it's Florence Neshida. Okay. And I'm still looking for Mr. or Mrs. Allen. Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, I...
Hey, my name is John Parker. I'm a West Coast coordinator with International Action Center. I'm also a person who has an edible garden in South Central Los Angeles. And just wanted to say that there's a disproportionate amount of poverty, joblessness, and desperation in South Central. And they just cut forty-eight billion dollars in the food stamp program. And as you know, desperation, poverty lead to conflict, and lead to internal conflicts, especially in the communities. And there's nothing to help relieve internal conflict in your community than sharing food. It builds trust, and it builds empathy with your neighbors. And although this proposal will not solve the bigger problem of poverty and things like that, and we will still demand that the government in poverty in South Central, this is a great step forward. And just personal experience, you know, my neighbors, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My neighbors come...
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Florence Neshida, followed by Daniel Allen, and lastly, Mr. Herman. Yes.
Thank you, council members and Council President, Mr. Wesson. I represent the master gardeners of Los Angeles County, who teach residents how to grow food. And also, I'm one of the founders of L.A. Green Grounds, who has been installing front yard gardens and parkway gardens. And we have tried to promote the idea, the encouraging idea, that people can grow their own food. The food justice or injustice and food scarcity is a real problem in many parts of Los Angeles. And one of the ways that we can help people is to show them, to demonstrate, and to give them the encouragement and hope that they can feed themselves. And the ability of the families to work together, also teaches children where food come from. And it is true that when the gardens are in the front yard, that people who are before strangers to each other will get to know each other.
Thank you. Do we have Mr. or Mrs. Allen? Okay, now we'll have Mr. Herman to close. Come forward, Mr. Herman.
One minute. And we are the dissidents. I am referring to ruthless criticism of all those that exists. But when it comes to the means of this idea of a fruit garden on the sidewalk, what violation are you really affecting in this city today? One, Title III. One, Title III. Title II of the American With Disability Act, Section 504 of the Rebootation Act of 1973. Discrimination, and in this particular form, it's a complaint. The complaint because if I am disabled and decide to get out of my car on the passenger side, you have a medium that's so large, so big, and without the consideration of elderly and disabled, that is a joke. And no offense to those people here who have the great idea, but we have a lot of vacant lots here in Los Angeles that you can produce and grow vegetation to give to all the constituents, all of you in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, to close, general public comment, I want to bring forward the man that really was responsible for educating me on the importance of trying to come up with some compromise. And I thought I saw Ms. Daniels. I want to thank her for her early work. But this is Mr. Finley, who drives a real cool motorcycle. Ron, it's a pleasure to see you, my friend.
Mine. I'm sorry I wasn't here. I was out advocating for the city in other countries, but I'm sorry I wasn't here for the first session. And thank you, Herb. Thanks all you guys in city council. I just want to say gardening is a gateway. And what I want to do is... I didn't come here with nothing prepared. I mean, but I'm loving the fact that, and I'm honored that you guys are seeing this and seeing that we, it's necessary for everyone to have equal access in the food system here. And this is just the beginning with this parkway ordinance. What we want to do, you know, we want to bring the sexiness back to the city and change it where we have other people looking at this city, and they want to aspire to do what we do with this food thing. It's one of the most important things here in the city. And this is just a start. We want lots. We want to get some of those, the vacant lots. We want to turn them into green spaces, and that's what we're trying to do to the city.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, now, Mr. Parks. In fact, as Mr. Parks is getting ready to speak, maybe we should have reps from street services and general services come forward. Come to the center table.
Thank you very much. Mr. Olive. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. We're fully in support of your report, but there's some details that I'd like to see if we've considered. And it kind of comes from our experience with the gated lot program, that people signed up to do things and they move on, and other people didn't accept the responsibility and who's responsible, what the liability is. And so, I just want to ask whether there was any consideration on a couple of items? That if someone chooses to make their parkway into a garden, does that require a renter to get permission from the owner? Or has that been considered?
Councilman, the way the city ordinance, municipal code currently reads right now is that it says owner or occupant. So, I believe that covers the renter as well.
Because what I think the concern would be if the renter left after doing it, and the owner is being held accountable for its lack of maintenance, the first thing you'll have is people shrug and say, "It wasn't my decision or my idea." And now, you may want to put some kind of a lean against my property because I didn't maintain it. I think that's something we need to consider, that if there is a renter, that they get permission? And just a consideration. The other one that came up was, is that there be some requirement that when a person does this, that there's a maintenance agreement, that they are going to maintain it? Because I can see that, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, and that you will find that there's going to be a number of things will come up that we've not considered. Right now, in my neighborhood, we have an influx of rodents and also animals that eat fruit that falls to the ground. All of a sudden, with this type of low-level fruit, do you then encourage or bring animals that we've not seen before and create an infestation problem? So, that's another issue that has come up and come of our meeting.
Councilman Ron Olive with the Bureau of Street Services. Yes, those are good points, and you can see in our report, we've listed a number of concerns still that are unresolved. We unfortunately don't have all the answers. We know there'll be some things as we get started that'll come up and we'll have to address. We're gonna work with the city attorney's office to try to address some of those concerns in the municipal code amendments that we've cited in the report. But again, we won't have all the answers when we roll this thing out.
No, I realize. That's why I'm just throwing out some suggestions that you might throw it into your basket when you talk to the city attorney.
Absolutely.
The other one is that whether there's a requirement of people maximizing their private space before they go to the parkway, in the sense of their private yard space. Just a thought. I'm just saying that these are things, if you can consider them and when you talk to them. The other one, and I agree with you, indemnification would be too costly, but whether there is some consideration of having some insurance for the potential trip and falls and people that may get injured navigating their way through the garden. So, those are four things that I'd ask you to look at as you add them to your list of, on that one page of all the things you haven't resolved, and see if there's issues that are relevant as you move forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Council President Wesson, and thank you really for your leadership on this issue. I am very excited about this particular measure. And I want to thank Mr. Finley, if he's still in the audience with us. I was particularly impressed by his TED Talk and moved by the notion of trying to figure out how to get gardening gangsters, how to make gardening and this connection to our community cool for our children. And he's absolutely right in his talk when he speaks about if you start talking about broccoli, I think it was, or cauliflower, kids start eating broccoli or cauliflower. So, I'm very excited for LA Green Grounds and for bringing the item to our attention. So, thank you very much for your leadership on this. I'm hoping that staff can give me a sense as to what the program will entail. I know that the devil's going to be in the details here, but a concern of mine is trying to figure out, is there going to be any fees associated with the proposed edible landscaping? Will there be a need like the current sort of law dictates as it pertains to current landscaping? Is there going to have to be a Bureau of Engineering review? Can you give me just sort of a synopsis of where the guidelines are going and what you think it's going to look like?
First of all, my apologies for not introducing myself, Lance Luishy, with the Bureau of Street Services. The way the recommendation is stated right now, there will be no fees required of people that would wish to do this type of planting. They'd also would not be required to have a permit. And so, there wouldn't be any type of review. The changes in the municipal code or proposed changes would allow residential property owners or their occupants to go ahead and plant their parkways without the need for either permit or associated permit fees.
And so, there wouldn't have to be a necessary review for the planned parkway. Is that right?
That's correct.
Very good. And so, any issues that result as a result of maybe an improperly put garden, that sort of thing, that would be complaint-driven. It wouldn't be something that we'd have to sort of pre-approve or get sign-off on from any agency or department?
That's correct.
Very good. And it looks as if the list of sort of the approved types of trees, fruit trees and that sort of thing is going to be forthcoming 90 days. Is that a realistic expectation as to when you think we'll have sort of the final measure for us to be able to vote on?
We believe that 90 days is adequate for us to come up that list of trees, yes.
And is there anything else outstanding in terms of sort of liability? Because I know that the report mentioned a little bit about the city attorney trying to sort of understand what potential liability. I mean, I'm hoping that after today, you all come back with a final package and we can get this going. What else is outstanding?
Well, the recommendation actually is to request the city attorney to review the city municipal code and to see if that proposed changes are in fact feasible and include looking at the liability issues and the risk factors that the city would be exposed to, and then come back with those recommendations.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Wesson, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I do want to just give a big thank you to everyone, to city staff, to Ms. Daniels, to all of the activists. I mean, you're the ones that made this happen. And with that said, let's prepare to vote on this. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
This passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if we could now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. And I think it's very appropriate that Ms... Okay, so this, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Fuentes, and then, Mr. Bloomingfield, we're gonna take up your issue as well. I had some conflicting reports. Sorry about that. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, and thank you, members, for helping us celebrate this morning National Food Day, the resolution that I introduced today. Coincidentally, we had a tremendous reception this morning to talk about the anniversary of the Good Food Purchasing Pledge. And thank you, Ms. Martinez, for your leadership on the school board, helping us understand that it can be done. It is possible for us to be able to be smarter about our food choices. And of course, Mr. Corretts was the author of that motion a year ago. This resolution really is meant to symbolize today how important food is in our communities. We know the staggering statistics that we have so many children that are in poverty, but more so are in food insecure home situations. We know that one in four children in California has food insecurity issues. 2.5 million kids in the state of California face food insecurity. In our very own county of Los Angeles, we know that number is close to 700,000 children who deal with food insecurity every single day. So, for me, being able to celebrate today as National Food Day is very important, not just because the San Fernando Valley has a rich heritage in agriculture. We used to have onions and citrus and olives, but because it's such an important part of our ability to be sustainable in Los Angeles. It's such an important part for us to be able to be more self-sufficient and be able to give our children, our community, the ability to be prepared and ready. Unfortunately, today, colleagues, our country's in crisis. We are facing, as you all know, a tremendous amount of gridlock in Congress. On October 31st, I'm sad to report the CalFresh program, which is part of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as food stamps, is going to be facing a $5 billion cut because of the inaction taking place at the congressional level. As a result, California is going to lose a tremendous amount, about $457 million in CalFresh benefits to our communities that need them the most. As I mentioned to you, Los Angeles County in particular has a tremendous need with almost 700,000 young people going hungry every day. That means that 21 meals in a month in a family of four are going to be taken away because of our inaction at the congressional level to be able to do the right thing by people who are just hungry. So, colleagues, I hate to end on a sour note, but it is so important for us to be able to be more sustainable, so important for us to be able to be smarter about our food choices, so important for us to be able to adopt policies like the one that Council President Herb Wesson has helped us become more sustainable in the edible landscapes. I want to thank all of the advocates today, all of the people that are helping make this be a big part of Los Angeles sustainability in not just educating all of us, but helping make good food options every single day. And I want to wish everybody a National Food Day. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for all of your help.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Bonn, and followed by Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise mainly to commend Councilman Fuentes and Councilwoman Martinez for the work they've been doing on this. I spoke earlier today at the reception in the rotunda, and I won't repeat the whole thing, but I think it is incredibly important that we as a city focus on health and nutrition. We have, as I have said many times, a wellness crisis in Los Angeles. And on the west side, I live in a relative oasis of healthy food, where it's very easy to have access to fresh fruit, to have access to organic food, to have access to food if you so choose that does not have GMO. That is not the case in all of Los Angeles. And I think it is extremely important that we end what is so often in Los Angeles, the redlining of health and nutrition and wellness. And so, I want to commend my colleagues. I want to commend my constituent Paula Daniels for her work with the Food Policy Council. I also want to encourage my colleagues to eat a little bit better. As many of you know, I have a strange diet, mostly organic and raw food. I have brought for you today, because the CLA has a lot of junk in the back, we have some fresh bananas. And for those of you who are a little more daring, I have some raw vegan soy and gluten-free kale pizza-flavored kale chips, which I will pass around, and I hope you'll appreciate.
Mr. Bonn, can I have a banana, please?
You may.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to also stand and thank council members Fuentes and Martinez for highlighting the agricultural community gardens as an important component of healthy living and a healthy community. As many of my Valley colleagues can attest to, this history of the San Fernando Valley is synonymous with agriculture, and it's the vast fields of orange groves that continue to be diminished throughout the San Fernando Valley because of overdevelopment. When it comes to preserving the history of the San Fernando Valley in the city of Los Angeles, it's more than just preserving pictures and stories. It's also about preserving the unique horticultural history as well. I don't know of many of my colleagues that are aware, but the seed library of Los Angeles recently formed in the San Fernando Valley. And the seed library is a place that is organized where it's dedicated to ensuring a variety of food supplies. Members simply check out seeds. They go to the seed library and they check seeds out to grow them in their own gardens and community gardens. Once harvested, the seeds are then collected and deposited back to the library to be planted at next year's crop. And these libraries, these seed libraries, are actually cropping up, if you will, throughout the San Fernando Valley. They're a wonderful thing. Thank you. I worked on that all night. Additionally, organizations like the Southern California Garden Club, the West Valley Garden Club, Sea Sun's Community Garden Clubs, Granada Hills Salad Bowl Garden Club, some of those have been around for some 65 years. And we've been working to promote greater interest in gardening, providing workshops, best practices. In fact, this year, we launched the Year of Healthy Living, where every month, we've been putting out tips in our newsletters about healthy living, certainly partnering with the North Valley Family YMCA and many others to promote it. As many of you know, before Bloomberg got interested in banning the size of soda, I put in a motion to actually ban sugary sweetened beverages in the city facilities that we sell to kids in those machines as well and promoting healthy lifestyles. I've been on the board now for 17 years of the American Diabetes Association, where next year, we'll be roasting Paul Corretts, and we all look forward to that fun event. But the important thing is that we promote healthy lifestyles, community gardens. I want to thank the council members, my colleagues, for bringing this yet again. And I want to thank Mr. Corretts for all the new material from this morning for the roast coming up. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Corretts. Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Corretts.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a few presentations, if I might, from the podium on sort of a combination of Item 24 and Item 30.
Is that okay, Mr. City Attorney, on this item, on these? Are we putting them both together?
And if not, we'll make these presentations under Item 24. It's for leaders in good food policy.
You're okay, Mr. Corretts. You're okay. Run his clock.
Oh, I thank Councilmember O'Farrell for shepherding my item, Item 24, through Arts and Parks so we could hear it today. And I thank councilmembers Fuentes and O'Farrell for their good work on this measure, Mitch Englander and others who have worked on good food policy. We've made history on Food Day last year by adopting the most progressive and metric-based food purchasing policy in the country, which was a product of a year of hard work by the LA Food Policy Council led by Paula Daniels. The policy advances five key values in food procurement: local economies, environmental sustainability, valued workforce, humane food, nutritional health, and it awards points for achievement in those categories. A few weeks after the council acted on a motion by then-school board member, now councilmember Nury Martinez, LAUSD, the largest food purchaser in Los Angeles, also adopted the policy. And Nury, I thank you for your great leadership on this issue as well. By adopting the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, the city and the By adopting the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, the city and the school district made a commitment to ensuring that public food dollars are spent in a way that delivers the best quality food with the highest nutritional value to all Los Angelinos. So I'm now pleased to recognize, on behalf of the city of L.A., the accomplishments of these good food leaders. First, the LAUSD and Gold Star. LAUSD has emerged as a good food leader, not only for its students, but region-wide. David Binkel, Food Services Director for LAUSD, is an active participant in the L.A. Food Policy Council and serves on its leadership board. LAUSD committed to sourcing 50% of their produce locally and exceeded that goal. And through its distributor, Gold Star, LAUSD has sourced over 70% of its produce locally at no additional cost. And because of this, at least $12 million has been redirected to local farmers, processors, warehouses, distributors, and workers right here in our region. That's a win-win-win. So let's give them a big hand. LAUSD's leadership is having a ripple effect along its supply chain. Gold Star also supplies LAUSD with baked goods and has reformulated their product lines so that their buns are made with reduced sodium, no high-fructose corn syrup, and from 100% sustainable California-grown wheat flour. Participating California farms are required to use sustainable farming practices, including water conservation, habitat conservation, air quality management, and workplace and workers' rights. So if we could present the certificates to David Binkel of LAUSD and Dan Manson of the CEO of Gold Star.
They got him right there.
Secondly, the Convention Center in Aramark. The Convention Center and its food service provider, Aramark, was the first city department to enthusiastically sign the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, and they've been proactive participants in the program since then. The Convention Center focused on the nutrition category, rearranging its retail food displays to prioritize healthier options, replacing high-impulse items such as candy and snacks with fresh fruit baskets near cash registers. As a result, the Convention Center and Aramark have observed a substantial increase in the sales of fresh fruit, again, not at any additional cost. The Convention Center is already exceeding the baseline benchmark in sourcing local food items and purchasing sustainably caught or farmed fish as a part of Aramark's partnership with Monterey Bay Seafood Watch. They've also demonstrated leadership in the valued workforce category through a partnership with the Coalition of Imoculie Workers. Aramark has established a reporting system that protects from retaliation tomato workers in Imoculie, Florida, who report labor violations. And if we could present them with their certificates as well. Already got them. Third, we'd like to recognize Guggenheimers, who stepped forward to sign the Good Food Purchasing Pledge in spring of this year. They provide food service to Google L.A. and ROLL International. Google L.A. scored very highly across all five value categories, particularly the valued workforce and animal welfare categories, the two most challenging to meet. We are proud to have Guggenheimers' participation and proud that some of our most prominent local companies are joining in. And so if we could recognize them as well. Congratulations, and thank you for your good work. The last two, Department of Aging and Morrison. Department of Aging works with food service provider Morrison and several nonprofit subcontractors, providing approximately 4,500 meals a day to seniors at locations throughout L.A. Sometimes, these are the only meals that these seniors will eat that day. A key highlight of the department's operation is their commitment to serving healthy meals to seniors, which is reflected in initiatives to limit added sodium, sugar, and fat to meet the dietary standards of the Older Americans Act. The department also prioritizes the purchase of fresh produce items, does not use deep-frying as a cooking method, and has an onsite wellness program with nutrition education. A significant percentage of their dairy products were sourced from within 200 miles and were hormone-free. This is also difficult to achieve, so congratulations. Thank you for your... And lastly, the Department of Water and Power and SEDEXO. A key achievement for the DWP in 2013 was the inclusion of the Good Food Purchasing Guidelines in their request for proposals for food service operations, requiring that future contractors of the DWP cafeteria adopt the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, implement the guidelines, and comply with any reporting requirements. Through SEDEXO, DWP promotes several healthy and sustainable food service and purchasing initiatives, and we thank them as well for their good work. And thank you all for your work in this regard. We've made tremendous progress, and we want to thank Paula Daniels, who I think is here.
Thank you very much.
For her great work on this and her leadership as well.
We have other speakers on the queue. Mr. Price, followed by Ms. Martinez.
I just want to take the time to acknowledge my good friend, Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, for your leadership on this issue, and Mr. Corretts and Mr. O'Farrell. And also thank my good friends at L.A. Food Policy Council, Paula Daniels. Thank you so much for helping me when I was on the school board on our Good Foods Purchasing Resolution. And Claire Fox, where's Claire? Alexa, please stand up. All you wonderful women that are just doing the great work on behalf of all of our residents, citizens, and our children, thank you so much for the work that you do. And I want to recognize a very special friend. He's a Food Service Director at LAUSD, Mr. David Binkel. Please stand. Thank you very much for all the work that you continue to do on behalf of our kids. And I just wanted to acknowledge that LAUSD has sourced approximately 72% of its produce locally. And LAUSD has adopted Meatless Mondays as a result of our resolution. And by 2014, the students will be eating 100% sustainable whole wheat buns, low-sodium food. And we're now off of, we are now giving our children, they're drinking hormone-free locally from local dairies in our schools, so milk. So that's very important, and thank you so much for your leadership. I think we've come a long way. A whole year has passed, but I think we're continuing to make great strides. Thank you, Paula, for your leadership on this. Thank you so much.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to first salute my colleagues for their leadership on this issue and the issue before with the community gardens. You know, it is important, good health, healthy food, healthy eating is a real requirement. It's a quality of life issue throughout our city. And there was some discussion about, you know, there being an oasis in some parts of town. In my part of town, it's a desert, food desert. And so being able to provide good food, education about the importance, and encouraging communities to take responsibility for themselves is real empowering. The fact that we have public sector, private sector, the unions, neighborhood groups, all coming together, community activists coming together on this point is significant. And so I just want to applaud the Food Council and other advocates for making good things happen and making sure that we recognize the importance of good eating and are able to do it ourselves. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We do have public comment on this. I'm gonna call for a one-minute public comment, Mr. Clerk, on that. Juan Akala, Juan, please, followed by...
Communication from the city. I didn't have an agenda. You guys were totally disorganized. The other room, we couldn't even hear you. City hall does not work. It doesn't work. Mr. Fuentes, I'm beginning to not like you. You snubbed me over there. And I thought you were for the people. I want to go see Mr. Brown and then Mr. Obama about ending homelessness. We can do it. We're smart enough. But the way you guys conduct yourselves is like the elephants put them off three years. You know, you put everything off for what, for money?
Mr. President, he has not talked about it.
Thank you for the direction. Next speaker would be Arnold Sachs. One minute, Mr. Sachs.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate the fact that you're controlling the time we get to speak. But, and I appreciate this item, but I didn't hear anything. I heard Mr. Fuentes mention that the federal government's gonna cut off... How much money did you say in Food Stamps? So where's the signature letter from the city council? Where's the motion? Where's the resolution from the city of L.A. to the federal government saying you can't cut that money? We need that money for people. Where's it coming up? All this gardening is fine, so do some activity. Make yourselves important and put our resolution together. Where's the mayor to put up a resolution saying that loss of funding will affect thousands of residents in some of our poorest communities? Who's stepping up? Who's the leader for the city council? Got no answer here. But we're talking about buying and selling. Oh, and by the way...
I'm the leader right now. You finished your time, you can sit down. That was your minute. Now I call on Mr. Kocorian. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I know we don't usually get into back and forth on public comment, but since Mr. Sachs asked the question, in fact, Mr. Blumentfeld and myself have already introduced the exact motion that he's just asked about. It's been heard by the Budget and Finance Committee, and we will be having reports back, and that will be considered by the council soon.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Walsh, please. John Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Parkway planting, is that correct, planting? Parkway planting. P.O. Box 3664, Beverly Hills, California. Note that card. I want to say Makepeace.
Hi there. My name is Finian Makepeace. I'm from Venice, California. I'm with a group called Kiss the Ground, the New Victory Garden Movement. We've been fortunate enough to have great meetings with the mayor's office and Mike Bonn and his staff. We're doing a lot to galvanize the community of Venice, to start pilot projects that show how community gardens can be changed and made into victory gardens for the public and restaurants and everything, so people can directly be associated with gardening and seeing what the potential is. A big thing that we're working on is composting. The city of Los Angeles is very far behind a lot of the major cities in the United States in terms of its composting and the efforts and the organization that's behind that. We're looking to work directly with the city to help you guys make that so that people understand what to do and how vital composting is to regenerating the soil so that we can have soil everywhere in L.A. be used for gardening. Thank you. It's gonna be a great year, and I'm excited to be a part of this.
Julie Beals, thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Julie Beals, and I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Community Garden Council, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning. I especially thank Councilmember Fuentes for your leadership on these many points relating community gardens today. I want to just let you know that we manage directly 27 community gardens in L.A. County, and we offer advice and workshops to another 118 gardens here. These gardens are not just encouraging healthy eating, they are also bringing communities together, developing cross-cultural relationships, creating jobs in the field of gardening, and they are reducing crime in our neighborhoods. So we appreciate your support. I'm looking forward to working with you on the water issues, because water is our largest expense. And please, I encourage you to help us create more community gardens in Los Angeles. Thank you.
From the Los Angeles Food Council, Anisha Higurani. And please correct me if I mispronounce your name. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Anisha Higurani, and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council. Over the past two years, the Los Angeles Food Policy Council has facilitated the Urban Agriculture Working Group, because we recognize that urban food production is a critical food access strategy that can bring fresh, nutritious fruits and vegetables to communities that lack healthier food options. The recent passage of state legislation incentivizing land use via urban agricultural zones and the amazing policies discussed today suggest that our political leaders see the role that urban agriculture can play in securing an equitable food environment and a healthy, economically vibrant city for all. We congratulate the city for elevating urban agricultural issues on National Food Day and look forward to the city's continued support to push forth meaningful policies that encourage urban food production. And I'd like to especially thank Councilmember Fuentes for your leadership on bringing this forward, this resolution today. We're hopeful that this legislation will pave the way for a comprehensive urban agricultural strategy for the city of L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca De La Rosa.
Good afternoon. My name is Francesca De La Rosa. First, I'm representing Works Women Organizing Resources Knowledge and Services. We're an affordable housing developer that has incorporated a comprehensive edible landscaping program in six of our housing communities. I'm also here as Chair of the Urban Ag Working Group, and I'm thrilled that we're coming together today to talk about urban agriculture for the city of Los Angeles. When our working group came together more than two years ago, it should be no surprise, especially for these folks over here, that when we got together, we were determined to change the fact that our great city was way behind cities like San Francisco, Seattle, Boston, Chicago, when it came to recognizing the community benefits of urban agriculture. That instead of being ranked 42nd in the country in promoting urban ag, we dedicated ourselves to the cause of becoming number one in the country and being recognized as a national leader in this area. Councilman Fuentes, I thank you for your leadership on this issue, Councilman Wesson and all of you. And finally, thank you. We look forward to working with you on the water rate issue in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew Douglas, our final speaker.
Good morning, good afternoon. Lost track of time here. Good afternoon. Thanks, city councilmembers, for your time and these wonderful legislative decisions that you're making. In 1929, the Chamber of Commerce showcased Los Angeles agriculture on the cover of its annual catalog, and it says, "Los Angeles, the center of an agricultural empire." And now we find ourselves amidst a perfect storm, which began with the flower truck ordinance. And then we had the Homemade Food Act, which kicked in January 1st of this year. We have this wonderful resolution, and the edible parkways moving along. We have Assembly Bill 551, which was signed into law by Jerry Brown last month, which is going to provide, which is an Agricultural Incentive Zone Act. And so we can do reduction ratios with rooftops and empty spaces here. There's an old gardener expression that is, you don't plant, you don't grow the plants, you grow the soil, and the plants will grow themselves. With all these wonderful policy shifts, you guys are growing the soil. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're doing the job. We're just trying to help. Thank you very much. That's the last card. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So ordered. And L.A. Unified, thank you very much. Marshall High School, 71. Next item.
That brings us to Item 14, called Special for Cards. And, Mr. President, there is an amending motion, Item 14A, that has been circulated.
Okay, so we're gonna call these cards right here. Cindy? Okay, good. Mike, you want to go speak? Councilman Blumentfeld.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. Today is a very special day for the Warner Center area of Woodland Hills, for the 3rd Council District, and for the city of Los Angeles. It marks the end of an eight-year Herculean effort by the community to come up with a bold vision of what the next 22 years in that area are going to look like. Community plans are living and breathing blueprints intended to capture the hopes and dreams of people who live in those neighborhoods. In the 1970s, the first Warner Center plan was adopted and devised from an autocentric planning view, where all of the destinations were to be reached by an automobile in the most efficient manner possible. It wasn't fashionable back then to talk about the pedestrians' point of view. As a result, what you find in the Warner Center area are monolithic city blocks that don't inspire much walking. You see buildings that are set back 200 feet from the street and surrounded by an ocean of asphalt, an ocean of parking spots that were originally designed to connect, believe it or not, by a monorail that would bring people on two different stories. But you look around now, as wonderful as an area as it is, there's something missing. And that something is pedestrians. You miss the vibrant life and the noise that exists on sidewalks in the great neighborhoods of this country and around the world. All you really hear is that old Missing Persons classic, "Nobody Walks in L.A." All you really hear is that old Missing Persons classic, "Nobody Walks in L.A." Well, this plan is going to help change that. Something had gone awry after several specific plan updates, and areas that were once industrial were becoming residential. Eight years ago, my predecessor in the council and the city council initiated a restudy of the Warner Center area. The restudy included the creation of a citizens advisory committee tasked with working with the city for a new city vision. And over the course of eight years, more than 100 community meetings that were held, ultimately what happened was a unified vision and concept for a sustainable transit-oriented, mixed-use, regional center was born. And like any time you give birth, although I can't speak from personal experience, it is a trying process, and there were problems, there were concerns, there was opposition. But at the end of the day, when this baby was born, it was a beautiful baby, and all the opposition had melted away, and what we have before us is something really special. The new Warner Center plan is a major shift in planning policy for this area. I would say it really is transformational. The new plan will break these large city blocks by introducing new streets and pathways to reconnect the city, to reconnect the city, the arteries, the veins of this city. Although the monorail plan didn't pan out, this new plan will connect workers and residents with the existing Metro Orange Line that will someday upgrade into a light rail system and is a very important part of our transit system citywide and especially in the valley. New bikeways and bike lanes will be installed throughout the area to allow opportunities for cyclists to connect to public transit and activity nodes. The new roadways and pathways will connect the area with the L.A. River. You know, a lot of people, especially around here, forget that the L.A. River starts in the San Fernando Valley. The river starts in the West Valley, and it is an important part of the city, and it is an important part of the valley. In fact, if you had asked someone 20 years ago, or even 10 years ago, if the Warner Center plan should interface with the L.A. River, they would have looked at you like you're crazy, like you're from Mars. But today, that is not a strange notion, and the community folks who put this together embrace the river as part of it. Now, the Warner Center plan is going to create eight new districts. It's going to have a college district, a commerce district, a downtown district, a north village district, a park district, a river district, Topanga and Uptown as well, each with their own unique character meant to grow in a smart and responsible manner. The districts will be guided with distinctive matrices or tables that will help balance the residential use and the non-residential uses, so folks will know in advance what this area will look like, what it can look like. The plan requires that all the projects provide publicly accessible open space and integrate into a network of public open space throughout the area. And I'm very proud to say that this plan will be the cleanest and greenest plan that Los Angeles has ever seen to date. It will have many sustainable elements, such as green roofs and lead silver or the equivalent requirements for new construction. I can go on and on about how great this plan is, but that would only prolong this plan from actually being implemented, so I want to move forward. So in sum, the Warner Center plan provides a clear process for builders to construct good projects, lets the community know upfront about the proper public benefits. And before I close, it's appropriate, I want to thank a few of the many people who have spent countless, countless hours putting this plan together and sharing their ideas, and many of whom are here today. To the members of the Warner Center Advisory Committee, I want to mention David Allison, Pam Aronoff, Rich Aronoff, Dennis DiBiasi, Tricia Robbins-Casson, Michael Klein, Brad Rosenheim, August Steuer, Scott Silverstein, and Marisa Ah. All of you, thank you. You have really done a yeoman's job, an amazing job, in putting this together. So yeah, go ahead and give them a round of applause. They really deserve it. I mean, I'm privileged to stand on your shoulders and be able to help bring this across the finish line, but those folks here in the audience, you guys are the ones who made this happen, and I recognize that, and I want the city to recognize that. I also want to acknowledge the following city staff who put in countless hours, from the city planning, Tom Glick, Kevin Keller, Alan Bell, and from the city attorney's office, Ed Young, and last but not least, the Department of Transportation and the many other people who worked so hard over the years to see this plan into reality, such as Pat Smith, Vegan Davison, and Wendy Lockwood. Now, I'd also like to ask the Department of Planning to explain the minor amendments that are before you today, so if I could ask the Department of Planning to come to the table, if it pleases the president.
Sir, the planning, give us a quick report there, so we know we're doing the right thing.
Give us a quick report, and I also want you to, in your report, I want you to answer a specific question, which is, is this the cleanest and greenest plan that has ever been brought forth for the city of Los Angeles? And if you could start with that question.
I'd be happy to answer that question. Alan Bell, Deputy Planning Director. Unquestionably, yes, this is one of the most significant plans that the city council has ever adopted in terms of advancing the cause of sustainable development. I think there are two reasons why this is so significant in that regard. Certainly, the location in the western San Fernando Valley, this is an area of the city that we all know can be characterized as certainly one of the most auto-oriented cities, areas of Los Angeles. In terms of Warner Center, what we have done here is we have incorporated the most innovative policies in terms of green building, sustainability, based upon plans that have been adopted over the last couple of years, including not only the Hollywood Community Plan, the Jordan Downs Plan and Watts, and then also the Cornfield Royal Seco Plan. We put it all together. We've learned from these prior plans, and it created, therefore, that most innovative plan. So therefore, it represents the most decisive break from the discredited planning theories of the 1970s. It allows us to move away from auto-oriented uses and embraces our sustainable transit-oriented future. As a councilman acknowledged, what this plan does is it embraces the Los Angeles River. It embraces new connections to the Orange Line through pedestrian-oriented design, mandatory green building standards, mandatory green roofs, open space. What this plan does is it creates a new model for how Los Angeles can reduce greenhouse gases and make sure that we have one of the most sustainable-oriented areas within Los Angeles.
Okay. I'm going to answer the question. Tom Glick from Planning Department, South Valley Office. This item came before the Planning and Land Use Committee on October 1st. Planning and Land Use Committee heard the item, and we had three significant letters introduced, one from Westfield, one from the CAC. They had several changes. Countless hours, even to the end, when this was before Plum, the CAC still met and went over the plan that was put forward by the city attorney, and they met to go over this plan and introduced several changes that were introduced at Plum, as well as, Councilman yourself, the changes that you introduced at Plum. And those were all, in the last three weeks, put into the final version of the plan. The CAC changes were completely incorporated into the plan. Westfield changes were incorporated in the plan. Now we have a carve-out in the plan for Regional Shopping Center. Regional Shopping Center has a special significance in this plan, because frankly, Westfield is an important partner within this plan and within the history of this plan and will continue to go forward. So that was included in the plan. And the last, which is the special thing in the plan, we were able to add some provisions in the plan, as you mentioned, the lead silver requirement and the solar reflex index. I mean, the West Valley is the hottest part of the city. The solar reflex index is a wonderful tool, not only to prevent heat gain, but also to get green roofing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I just, Councilman, you've done a great job right here, and the cleanest and greenest starts where the Bell and Catalina Masses Creek get together. Great work on the river and all that. We do have some cards, if we could, and I just got to read them into the, we have three speaker cards. We're going to read some into the record here. August Steuer, we're just reading that into the record. Scott Silverstein. David Allison. Dennis DiBescio. Cindy, Cindy still here? Cindy, good to see you here. Brad Rosenheim and Devin Scott. So those go in the record, but for cards for one-minute comment, Michael Klein, Larry Green, and Doug Alsonat. Begin now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Klein, and I'm from Woodland Hills, California. I've been proud to serve for the last eight years as the chair, co-chair of the Warner Center-specific Plan Citizen Advisory Committee. It's been a very unique experience, because it's been a true partnership between the city, city staff, and the citizens of the community. Businesspeople, residents, and other stakeholders have all come to the table and made a contribution to this plan. It's been built on consensus. Everybody's had a voice at our meetings, so you didn't have to be on the committee to be heard. You just had to put up your hand, wait your turn, and say your piece, and we'd have a conversation about it. We went through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of issues, probably over 1,000 hours of meetings. Everything's been vetted, and to my surprise, most agreed on. It's a solid plan. I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please introduce yourself.
My name is Larry Green. I'm senior vice president for Westfield. What you have before you today represents the very best of Warner Center, a place where there is a clear vision, a strong commitment by all the stakeholders, and a lot of passion about the future. Westfield is proud to play a significant part in delivering world-class retail to the Warner Center and to be a major part of creating jobs and revenues for our community. We want to thank and recognize the extraordinary effort by the planning department and the planning staff, the city attorney, DOT, and the many others on the city team that made this all possible. This was a huge effort by the community, and we thank all of those for making it happen. And finally, I think it should be recognized that Councilman Blumentfeld and his team brought this home and delivered it. We thank the councilmen for making Warner Center a priority, and we look forward to working with you to make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doug?
Good afternoon, now, council members. My name is Doug Arson of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, representing more than 380 businesses in the city, including many in Warner Center and surrounding valley neighborhoods. VICA strongly supports the Warner Center 2035 Plan, which will create a mixed-use, transit-oriented, regional center that promotes a jobs-housing balance in the West Valley. As previously noted, the plan was formed in partnership with Woodland Hills residents and business owners, to term a mutually beneficial concept for Warner Center. By developing shopping, entertainment, cultural, and recreational facilities within walking distance or connected by frequent transit service, hopefully within the next decade, a rail system to replace the Orange Line, the plan will attract development in accordance with state environmental guidelines under AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006, and transit-oriented development goals under the Sustainable Communities and Climate Protection Act of 2008, SB 375. Of supreme importance, development under the plan will result in the creation of 48,860 new jobs and attraction of 72,700 new residents to Warner Center in the next 20 years. We hope you'll move this forward immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney and Clerk. I found one called Juan. I call it Juan. Do you want to speak on this? You have one card. That's it.
The first thing I want to do is recommend that guy to my cleaners. I live on the street in my suits, less wrinkled.
Speak to the issue, please.
Oh, the issue, the issue. I've been to Warner Center, and they threw me out for looking homeless. So why don't you resolve the issue of people, the way people look first, and then build your beautiful communities? But first, in homelessness, because we don't need this kind of discrimination.
Thank you very much.
I've been thrown out of the Warner Center--
I know, thank you. You've got to talk on the issue. Thank you. No other speakers on the queue. Mr. Englander for comment.
I just wanted to quickly rise and thank so many people that have been working on this, and Bob's leadership on this, as well as former Councilman Dennis I., who did a tremendous amount of work, the planning department, who's gone out there, but mostly the community. And it's really been phenomenal. I remember when this project first came and was presented, and there were so many people in opposition to it. There was so much concern over the impacts and the traffic, some of the community room issues, all the issues that came around, and it was because of the neighborhood council members and the leadership, Brad, all the work that Brad Rosenheim's done, so many others, that came together, that it was incredible when this actually came through Plum. There was no opposition at all that showed up, which is extremely rare. And so I wanted to stand and applaud all your leadership in when you came here, bringing this all together as well, and I look forward to watching this move forward. Thank you.
Good, all right. So no other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. President, that's as amended by 14A.
Good. And fourth with on that. Thirty-two, please, 32. We have cards.
Item 32, called Special for Cards, and Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks first. I'll take the cards. Mr. Herman passes. Mr. Akala.
Remember this morning, everything was disorganized. There were no agendas. There were no speaker cards.
He is not speaking about this item.
Wait, I'm telling you why--
Continue with your thought. We'll get you--
Yes, I was trying to read the agenda and everything to be more illustrated on each item, but it's very difficult when the city's so disorganized. Continued consideration of the rule elections and intergovernmental relation committee report relative to the recommended changes to the city government's ethics ordinances. I think you should not have so many people in this horseshoe accused of sexual harassment. That's ethics, ethics, okay? And the other one is--
He is not on topic here.
All right, he's given a comment. Thank you so much on this issue here. Mr. Clerk, there's no speakers on the queue. Hold on.
President, this was called special for Councilmember Parks.
Oh, Mr. Parks, okay. Do you want the staff in the center table, Mr. Parks?
Yes, please.
Staff in the center table.
Good afternoon.
I just had a handful of questions I'd like to ask you, and want to thank you. First of all, as I went through the report, you've streamlined a number of things, and allowing us to use state definitions, streamlines even more, but there's some clarity I'd like to see if you could give me. On the first one is that a lot of the conversation in the document talks about making things transparent for the community to see it and our credibility. Do we have any sense of how often the community actually accesses those files or downloads those files? Just to get a sense of if, because I know almost every sentence starts off with credibility with the community.
Absolutely. Heather Holt for the Ethics Commission. Good afternoon. We get a lot of hits on our website. I'd be happy to respond with some more precise numbers for you. I don't have them right now with regard to how many people access the different files that we have. We do keep track of how many people access our website. We also get calls from folks and walk-ins, people wanting to see actual copies of documents. We do get a lot of that.
I think it would be helpful somewhere down the line on discussion, hits on websites are important, but if they're going specifically to these files that all of us take hours and hours to fill out, it would be interesting to know if anybody really cares. I mean, so that would be something that somewhere down the line, if you could--
Yes, and I can assure you that people do care. We do get requests.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is that in dealing with, I didn't quite understand, on the one hand, you eliminated the semi-annual report, and then you go further and say Forms 10 and 11 have almost identical information as the 700, but you chose to merge those two reports, even though you said they're very complicated and hard to get through, and make them into one. What's the difference between a merged report and the 700 report, and why couldn't we survive with just the 700 report?
That's a very good question. Merging the two reports was a reference to eliminating the need for two different kinds of reports. Right now, we have two different groups of people who file additional reports. Some file Form 10, some file a Form 11. The commission's thought was that we should just have one additional form, so that if you are someone who files two forms, then it's the same form for everybody. their current, the current versions of the forms, and make a new form that applies to everybody that focuses on restricted sources, and so that it doesn't simply duplicate information that is in the Form 700. Because restricted sources are a city concept, there's no reporting that ties into restricted sources through the state form.
Okay. So the thing is, is that these new forms that get generated, they're not for everyone, but those that have to do it in the future will get some training?
Absolutely. Yes.
The other thing I was wondering about, this issue of the semi-annual contract list?
Yes.
And I know you've put in your report, you're mandating a requirement that they send it to you. From what I've seen and monitoring those reports and recently an audit that was done by the controller, those things are in total disrepair. And I'm just wondering, we've not been able to get the mayor's office to mandate them. We've not been able to get the departments to respond. How is that going to work, and particularly when many of them do not have the resources to create the information?
It will require some effort on everyone's part. The hope is that by putting this affirmative mandate in the governmental ethics ordinance, that it will carry a little more weight than we have had in the past, and that cooperation with the departments will be obtained.
Is that... There's their sanctions? I mean, because one of the things we've done in the past with particularly Office of Finance, where they'll write a report and say these departments didn't comply, and they seem to be the same ones each time. So I'm just wondering, is there a new solution, or do we get people to comply, or how are you going to do that?
We engage in a lot of follow-up with departments, and we work with them to try to obtain compliance on the front end to the extent possible. The GEO does, actually, the charter authorizes the Ethics Commission to impose administrative penalties for individuals who do not comply with the requirements of the laws. So we could look into pursuing that option as well.
Would that be the general manager? That would be...
That's what we would have to look into. We would have to determine who was the appropriate person.
Okay. The other one on there, page number seven, you talked about, specifically mentioned lobbyists, lobbyist firms, lobbyist employees, and you basically did not address necessarily what we see a lot of as people that do the same thing as lobbyists but are not listed as lobbyists. Because as you go through that listing, you show people who are trying to influence issues in their regard. Well, that's almost everybody that shows up to talk to you about some project, yet they're not lobbyists. And so I'm trying to figure out, how do we distinguish that by the fact that we're monitoring people who label themselves lobbyists, but there are other people that are wandering through that are asking and lobbying in their regard, and maybe financial benefits to them, but they don't choose to call themselves lobbyists?
Well, the GEO doesn't give people the option of choosing whether they want to be called a lobbyist or not. If they meet the threshold, then they are by definition a city lobbyist. However, there are some requirements in that definition that exclude certain people who do engage in attempts to influence city action. One of the requirements is that you have to be compensated for those attempts to influence. So if you are volunteering your time, it doesn't apply to you. You also have to hit a minimum threshold number of hours. It's 30 hours in a consecutive three-month period. So unless you are being compensated to engage in 30 or more hours of lobbying activities, then you don't meet the city's threshold.
And compensation could just be their salary and the job that they hold?
Well, if they are being paid salary, and part of their job duties include attempting to influence the city, then that is considered compensated lobbying activity.
And speaking of lobbying, what happened to all of the effort of ethics over the last year about the lobbying paper or document? It was coming, and everybody had great hopes.
Yes.
They would be able to tell us the difference and evaluate some of these issues, and then it disappeared.
It's been a success. Actually, the law was approved, and we did streamline the reporting and registration requirements for lobbying entities. It's now entirely electronic. So they have to get electronic signatures, unique identifiers, and they file their forms that way.
But is this the lobbying ordinance that we've been waiting for?
The lobby... I'm sorry. I think you're referring to the comprehensive set of recommendations about the lobbying ordinance.
That's right. That's the one.
Yes. That was transmitted, and I believe it was 2009, and the entire ordinance was not brought forward, and that council file has since expired. But the provisions that were part of that recommendation, the comprehensive set of recommendations with regard to electronic filings, was passed. It was separated out and brought forward again.
So what would we have to do to bring the comprehensive... Is reactivate that file?
We could do that. The Ethics Commission actually is, it is in the queue to revisit the lobbying laws in their entirety.
Mr. Parks.
Okay. I'll hit my button again.
Thank you. Mr. Kretz, you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just have a question on the $100 limit from the restricted source. I'm just wondering how practical this is going to be, or if we're going to add yet another impractical element when I think we're actually trying to simplify this. So I have a friend that I've had for 30 years that represents a restricted source. We go to Philippe's, and I have a cup of coffee there. I believe that charge now for a cup of coffee is 11 cents. So it's 11 cents for a cup of coffee, and he's a restricted source. How much am I going to get fined? Am I going to go to jail? What's the requirement?
Drink water. Drink water, because it's free.
And is it really practical to have to be that fine? What was the harm in an incredibly tiny amount of money that clearly wouldn't have an impact on anyone's vote at $100, much less 11 cents? How do you look at that?
The Ethics Commission considered this issue pretty extensively, actually, and had several public meetings at which it was discussed. The thinking was that because the recommendations also include deferring to the state's definition for gift, which is far more complete and expansive than the city's definition of gift, that that would provide some additional livability, even within the recommended ban on gifts from restricted sources. The Ethics Commission also wrote in a number of exceptions into city law specifically for restricted sources. Some of them preserve existing exceptions, such as items that you might receive from a city union. But it also incorporates, it wouldn't incorporate coffee at Philippe's, but it would incorporate coffee at a restricted sources place of business if that was a normal office courtesy that was provided by that restricted source.
So what fine would I pay for missing my 11 cents?
Well, it would depend on how egregious it was. It would be, each of our cases are investigated and assessed on an individual basis.
Do you have a sense? I mean, I'm serious. This kind of mistake at zero, you're inviting mistakes, unintended mistakes. So having invited it, what do you expect the result would be? What's the worst-case scenario?
Yeah. The city charter authorizes the Ethics Commission to impose administrative penalties of the greater of up to $5,000 per violation, or three times the amount of money in, at issue. So in the scenario that you have given, the charter says that the maximum penalty would be $5,000 versus the 33 cents, which is three times the 11 cents. That being said, the Ethics Commission is a very reasonable organization and considers everything in context and is focused on egregiousness.
I have to say, I'm not going to vote against tightening up some of our limits, partly because honestly, it doesn't look good to do such things. It looks like you're not being as ethical. But as a practical matter, I see this coming back to bite councilmembers who inadvertently aren't aware that someone is a restricted source, and they have a cup of coffee with them. I think this is a mistake that we often make in dealing with ethics. We make it so impractical that we do the gotcha on the really little stuff, and we miss the really big stuff.
Yes. And I can tell you that the commission is very interested in not perpetuating a gotcha perception of its work. And in fact, that's one of the reasons that the list of bidders and contractors from the city agencies is so critical, because people have to be able to determine who is a restricted source if we're going to have these laws.
And frankly, let me just want to say one more thing, and then I'll be done. I think if we were really trying to get at the ethics but not make it impractical, we would have dropped the amount to $50, or $20, or $10. Putting it at zero just seems ridiculous to me. So I'm going to vote for it anyway, but I'm just preserving my right to say I told you so later when we wind up finding people for really inadvertent, tiny mistakes.
Right around the corner from the main counter at Philippe's is the water. You can get a lot of it. So it's always a suggestion. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kretz, for that point. We've had this discussion many times, which is more likely to influence somebody, that 11-cent cup of coffee, or the $5 million that somebody puts into an independent expenditure campaign to, you know, run against Mr. Kretz, or, you know, or support him? I just, I think that some of this stuff, it gets to the point of de minimis absurdity. But I'm, I will, along with Mr. Kretz, support it nonetheless, and I agree with you that the current Ethics Commission is certainly reasonable in its application of these things. I am concerned that some future commission may not be as much so. That's why we need to look carefully at these things. I'm a little more concerned about the ex parte communication limitation proposed, and I appreciate that the council, who the people have a right to petition, is already exempt from that under your proposal. But I'm more concerned about, for example, our volunteer city commissioners, who we want to encourage to go out and do fact-finding and get ideas from the people and visit their neighborhood councils and so on. And I think if you have a restriction on ex parte communications as to an adjudicative matter, it certainly makes sense, because we are sitting as an adjudicative body, and there's a due process obligation and so on. But if a member of our Parks Commission goes out to a park and sits and talks to my constituents about what they think we should be doing in our park system, that shouldn't be something that they have to disclose before they make a related decision. So maybe my example is an exaggerated one. I don't know. Maybe that's not the intention of this. But I am concerned, the legislative process by its very nature is improved by having more input from the public. And as I read this, this is not, this prohibition is not restricted just to paid lobbyists, right?
That's correct.
So if one of my constituents meets one of our city commissioners in a grocery store and says, you know, we really have to do something about our streets, and that commissioner then has to go vote on whether or not to support a measure to improve our streets, I just, I can't see how we have any business restricting or inhibiting that kind of communication at all. We want to encourage it. We want to do more. Because that commissioner, if that commissioner has to go to a commission meeting then and disclose every person that they talk to about a given issue, there's going to be a natural incentive for the commissioner to tell everyone who approaches them, I can't talk to you about that. I'm going to have to make a decision about that. I can't talk to you about that. I don't want my commissioners to do that. I don't want my general managers to do that. I don't want anybody in this city to do that. I want them to get more information from the broadest range of people, not less. So I have a real concern, substantive concern about that. So maybe you can address that.
I'd be happy to. There is absolutely no intention on the part of the commission to try to limit public engagement. The only part of the recommended framework for ex parte communications that would actually prohibit the communications is in a quasi-judicial setting, when there are due process rights at issue and somebody's personal interests are at stake and considered at a hearing. In terms of legislative matters that are not quasi-judicial and don't invoke due process, the recommendation is simply, as you noted, to require disclosure. It's not open-ended disclosure. It's disclosure about communications on issues that are on a particular agenda that's in front of a decision-maker, and it would be discussions, communications that occurred only since the last agenda for that particular body. So it would, I understand your concern about the inclination that some folks might feel like they shouldn't talk to anyone. That was certainly not the thought. The recommendations were actually modeled on what the port does in its meetings voluntarily, which is simply identify on the record about who they have communicated with on their specific agenda items before them that day.
What, who does? Sorry? The port?
The port, yes.
Well, again, let me give you an example that, if I may, just to follow up, Mr. President.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I have had matters that have impacted my district in which I've received 15,000 contacts from constituents. Most of our commissioners won't get that kind of contact, but let's say they get 500 emails and letters. All of them are ex parte communications. And all of those communications may be relating to a very specific issue that's coming up next week at the commission meeting. Are they then required to produce a list of all the emails with people's identity, who wrote to them? The emails may or may not even be identified as to who wrote them. It may be, you know, just a email name and no other identification. I'm really uncomfortable with that, because I think the incentive then is for that commissioner, that decision-maker, that policymaker to say, you know, it's just too much hassle. I'm not going to take any input from anybody, because then I just have to, you know, go through the trouble of disclosing it, and heck, I don't get paid for this anyway. I'm doing it as a volunteer. So why should I, you know, go through all this trouble to disclose? I'm just not going to talk to anybody about it. I'll make my own decisions. And then we have, you know, ivory tower decision-making that doesn't get any input from the public.
Very good point there, and thank you, Mr. Kocorian, on that. Mr. Englander?
Okay. So from my understanding, and a lot of these issues that have been brought up, what's before us today is simply moving the committee report, asking for a draft ordinance to be drafted. But that draft ordinance will then come back to this body or to committee?
I'm not sure exactly. It would certainly come to this body. It might go to committee first.
I would ask that in this vote, if I could, amend the recommendation that the draft ordinance goes back to committee first, before it comes to council second? Okay. So we just have a little more time to go through it?
Okay.
Just for the record, Mr. Clerk, it does go to committee first. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
We'll just officially make sure that it does that in the vote. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd just like to kind of follow up on a couple of questions that Mr. Kocorian asked on a similar issue. It would appear that if we're talking about conflict, that a person would have to make a judgment as to whether it benefits them as opposed to how many people they spoke with. And so it's clear on the adjudicated part, but the legislative part, and at what level it says it excludes councilmembers. But where does it put the rest of the city administration and general managers? If they're going to make a decision about some issue that they're going to recommend to you, where does it put them on the legislative process as it goes through committees and council?
The disclosure would apply to them in those scenarios. If there were a conflict of interest that arose from a personal financial interest that the decision-maker held, then there are other laws that would prohibit that person from participating in that decision.
That's an easy one.
Yes.
The issue is the ex parte and how they report that. I mean, if they're having communications with people that come to them and trying to influence their final report, how does that evolve into the decision-making? I think everybody understands if you have a financial issue that you might gain, that you should be raising your hand and saying, I'm not going to vote on it, or I'm going to excuse, recuse myself. But this other part of the legislative process, where conversations or emails, things of that nature, how does a city general manager or his or her subordinates, how are they impacted, and what's the requirement for them?
Well, if a person is recused from an item, the participation is greater than simply voting or making a final decision. So that person shouldn't be involved at any stage of that particular item. So an ex parte communication with that person should be very ineffective, because that person can't make a decision on that issue, can't participate in any way in the entirety of the matter. So I'm not sure if that's answering your question then.
No, it's not. Not because if you recuse yourself, you pretty well answered the issue.
Yes.
It's the issue of someone formulating a report that's making recommendations to the council, and they're gaining input from their commissioners, they have input from the community. Because many times, the council will direct a general manager that, before you come back with that report, go out and talk to the neighborhood councils, talk to different people as you formulate your recommendations.
Yes. And if they, if I understand what you're asking is whether the staff would have to make all of the disclosures, the answer is no, not under the recommendations. It would be the ultimate decision-makers.
Okay. So that would be what, the general manager? The ultimate decision-maker is generally the elected official. Everything else is... Everything else is a recommend, is a recommendation.
With regard to commissioners, that's generally, however, we do have, and this might not apply in the example that you're talking about, but we do have individuals who serve as decision makers in quasi judicial types of settings as well.
Judicial, I think, is pretty clear. It's legislative that's unclear.
Yes.
Let me ask you another issue is that, one of the things, as this goes back to be retooled a little bit, I would just recommend that when you deal with that seven, number seven again, that when you say that city unions are exempt as it relates to gifts, that you might add that second sentence in that first phrase and say, unions that are represented, employees that are represented by unions are exempt, because if you don't read the whole paragraph, it just stands out that unions are exempt.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
All right, Mr. Parks, we just got to overtime again.
Okay, let me push my button.
Mr. Parks, follow, Mr. Kretz then, Mr. Parks.
I would just ask that when you come back with the ordinance, that you review the issues that we've raised and try to take those into account and address them, because I think you're a little off from the point where the whole council, I think, is comfortable with the direction you're going in.
Mr. Parks. This will be coming back to all of us.
The other issue I want to ask you, and this has been vague, and we've come to you for guidance on this, although we say that it's, political activities are prohibited in city facilities and city resources, what's vague and we've not been able to get a resolution on, what is considered a city facility if it is leased or if it's one of our surplus properties used by a nonprofit? Are those still city facilities and are those still prohibited for political activity?
Yes, and we heard you on that. And we, we went to great pains to make that as clear as possible, and I'm just going to look at the specific language of the recommendation to make sure I'm saying it correctly. So instead of simply referring vaguely to city facilities, the recommendation is that political activity be prohibited in a room or building that is owned by the city, primarily paid for or used by the city, or occupied by a city official or agency employee in the discharge of city duties.
So their nonprofit status or their bylaws does not overrule that?
That's correct.
Okay, and then let me just ask a general question. If these current cases go to the Supreme Court and they get rid of all limits, where does that put all of our ethics rules and limitations that we've worked so long and hard to keep in place?
Are you referring to contribution limits?
Yes.
Well, then we would make sure that we have as robust a disclosure program as possible because the Supreme Court has said that even if it strikes down certain regulations, that disclosure is always appropriate.
So you would foresee some point in time you'd have unlimited contributions, but yet you'd have disclosure if the Supreme Court says so?
We're waiting, yes, we're waiting to see what the Supreme Court says, but for now, we still have contribution limits, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so that is completed. The speakers on the cue, this goes to the city attorneys. I'll give the affirmative vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
That brings us to item thirty-three.
Thirty-three, we have public comment on thirty-three. Arnold Sachs, followed by Mr. Harmon, is my mic still on there? Arnold Sachs. One minute, please.
Can you give us a reason why we're being limited to one minute on these items, sir?
Because I want to hear your point in one minute.
Yeah.
I'm in the chair, thank you.
This is, this is just so, so wrong. But this discussion, this is about killing somebody who's found a way to build a better mousetrap to pick up passengers. You know, you have a situation with food trucks who go around the city, who have the advantage of not having to pay brick and mortar fees for their food trucks, and yet you allow them to operate. This is the same kind of situation. These people have found out a way to build a better mousetrap. You can use the same paragraph, comparison between the two. What's more important is the fact that the head of one of the cab companies mentioned a $4 fee at the airport. Investigate why they're getting $2 per cab trip out of the airport. It's not a fee, it's not a tax. What is that $2 for?
Mr. Herman, thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Herman. No, this issue here, item thirty-three, please.
Taking a breather there. Thirty-three, continued consideration of motion under Mr. Kretz and Labange relative to preserving city rights to appeal recent California Public Utilities Commission, a decision regarding the regulation of resharing services. How can we regulate something that the public is unaware of? Where's the decision of the public to make a comment as opposed to sit here and wait till the end, when everyone's gone, who may have an interest in making a comment in this decision? You gave Arnold Sachs one minute, and that was it. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't take this as a reason for the one minute. Empty comment.
Wanacala, Juan. I got you, John. I got either John or Juan.
John Walsh, JohnWalsh, belonging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Always a pleasure to speak in front of acting President Labange. Remember, I'm on your side here. I'm on your side. I'm always on your side when you're right. And I'm telling you, one of the only African millionaires who came to this country with the, with just clothes on his back and is now an African millionaire is the owner of one of the taxi cab companies. He's from Ethiopia, my second home. And I would like to say, what we have here is race. We have these little snot-nosed people on the internet sending cars to your house. It's dangerous. You have no idea what's happening. It's going on, and Eric Garcetti is all in favor, and he's going to veto. If you vote this in, Garcetti is going to veto it. But do it, do the right thing. Wanacala.
All I know is every time I'm riding my bike, those cab drivers do not respect the bike lanes. They park right there. So why don't you teach cab drivers how to drive first? That would be a good idea, really. They don't know how to respect other people's rights. They just want to get that money, because otherwise, how do their families survive? And it's all this money gathering that creates a lot of problems out there in traffic. And cab drivers are very aggressive. They are. I don't know if that's the issue, but that is an issue to me, because I ride a bike. Hello? Because the city stole my vehicles. The city stole my vehicles. You damn tears with a license?
Next speaker, Myron Rogan, is that correct? R-O-G-A-N. Myron Rogan, Rogan Executive Chauffeurs, not in the council chamber, so completes the public comment. Now we have Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Parks.
Much, Mr. President. Colleagues, first, a quick note about the timing of how we got here on this particular day. I want to note that when this motion came in by Mr. Kretz, I waived it from committee, which I'm traditionally loathe to do for an issue of so much controversy because of the time constraints of the legal filing. It was originally scheduled twice last week and got continued until yesterday, when I was actually, coincidentally enough, at a symposium on transportation and technology, which is why I asked it to be continued to today, because I take seriously my responsibility as Chair of Transportation Committee and felt I needed to weigh in on this. And I also take seriously the fact that I'm the council member who probably has the greatest number of pink mustaches in his district. That's one of the trademarks of one of the companies we're discussing today. The ride sharing companies tend to operate in hot zones in Los Angeles, around the airport, Hollywood, and downtown, and their service area encompasses most of my district and Santa Monica, so I have a little bit of familiarity with this. I want to note that there has been a perception in the press that the city of Los Angeles does not like this new emerging technology, that shortly in the beginning of July, DOT issued cease and desist orders to these companies, and that the council as a whole, it has been portrayed, views these companies as bandit cabs. The mayor clearly on a different page. I actually want to indicate that I'm actually very close to the mayor's position on this is I do not feel that these are bandit cabs. I actually feel like this is an emerging new technology. This is the future, and I don't want us to be standing, looking into the future and saying, yo, back off. This is Amazon.com. This is eBay. This is Craigslist. This is Kindle. This is the World Wide Web. I don't know that we can adequately predict what the impact of this new technology and these new companies will be. Will it be as Amazon.com has been to bookstores, which some of us may remember once existed, or will it be more like food trucks, gourmet food trucks in Los Angeles and restaurants, which don't particularly like each other, but coexist not particularly happily, and both serve a slightly different demographic? I don't think that we know that yet. I don't think that we know. But it's clear that something new is happening. It's clear that a new economy is being shaped. It's this, it's Airbnb, it's a whole bunch of different phenomenons, part of the shared economy. And the question is, how do we attack that? How do we embrace that? How do we deal with that? Do we insist that it fit into the regulatory scheme that we already have, or do we treat it as something that is new? I personally feel that we need to adapt and that we do not need to treat these as cab companies. The Public Utilities Commission spent a lot of time looking into this issue and decided, this is not animal, this is not vegetable, this is not mineral. This is not a cab company, this is not a shuttle service, this is not a limousine company. It is something new unto itself, and it came up with rules to look into that. I actually think the PUC did some pretty good work. My, my concern is that this has become a bit of a grudge match between the taxi company and the transportation network companies, the new technology. I'm not sure that it's wise for us to get into the middle of that and throw down with the cab companies. That's not to say I don't have concerns. I'm actually very concerned that there may not be universal access to the service these companies are providing. I talked earlier about the redlining of nutrition. I'm concerned about the redlining of access to these services. You know, the map I saw the other day at this symposium of where these rideshare companies operate in Los Angeles is the West Side, Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, downtown, and USC. That doesn't work for me. But the question is, do we appeal and ask for a rehearing at the PUC? There's some legal issues, I guess we'll get into in closed session, and I'm happy to talk more in detail. I don't want us to throw down and appeal because we agree that these are cabs. I don't want us to appeal because we agree that we need to be siding with the cab companies. I don't want us to throw down and say that we need to be protecting the cab industry. I don't think we should have a horse in this game. So I'm looking forward to the discussion we have in, in closed session about some of the legal issues, but I do want folks to know that I think that this is a complicated issue. I don't think it's something that we can fully understand yet, and I think before we start deciding what the regulatory scheme is for it, I think we need to see how it grows a little bit more. And I think the PUC has given us the right framework to see how it grows before we refine with more regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to that closed session also, but I, I think as most things in our communities are different. We have gourmet trucks on the West Side, we have trucks on the poor community. We have mustaches on cars on the West Side. We have a franchise cab service that gets us service throughout the city. So we're hampering a long fought and system of putting franchises to ensure everyone gets service. We also kind of cavalierly address the issue of what does it take to be a cab driver? It takes security, it takes background, it takes the fact that you have a picture of yourself in the cab, people that get in it know who you are. And then we have to, although we don't protect the cab companies or the taxi company, we can't ignore the fact that they voluntarily went into a green cab program a couple of years ago at their own volition, at their own cost. And so they are doing things greater than just picking people up, they're dealing with the environment. And my concern is the fact that we don't know what this new industry is going to do. I'm reluctant to begin to take apart the existing industry that we have taken years to develop and to put in place. And so when we talk about the taxi industry, most of the requirements are hard fought over long periods of time. And so the key today is, do we diminish those on the unknown and then come back and fix it? If we weren't out around in this city when we had a significant bandit cab problem that cost us literally millions of dollars of police time, LADOT time, to rectify. In fact, bandit cabs at one time became brothels on the, on wheels. And so these are things that we have to remember where we came from before we just throw a proven system out and start tinkering with what might be a new industry. We've seen in this city that 90% of most new businesses fail in the first five years. So in that case, do you then move forward and bank on this new business and then find out they left you adrift? And so I would hope that we protect the hard fought issues that we have, the impact on the industry, and the other issues is that we don't take a flyer on what we don't know, and we don't let people violate, again, the hard fought rules at the airport, that we allow people to go there under certain rules and others not, because what I sense in these new industry is they're going to cherry pick. They're going to go where the high volume, the high cost, and then they're going to go wherever they go before they put the mustache on their car. Cab drivers are there routinely, they buy their equipment, they're entrepreneurs, they invest in the city, and they're there for the long haul. So I would hope that we protect that industry as much as we can, and also the revenue they generate for this city before we decide another industry should begin to pick and choose what they like to do.
Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Bonin and Mr. Parks have articulated many of my concerns. Mr. Bonin, in fact, the idea that there are areas that won't be accessed by this, I don't believe this will be a, a new technology that will take into account the disabled, for instance, or anything else that's more difficult. But my greatest concern is the health and safety of our passengers and even of our drivers. And the PUC, I think, has already hurt us a little bit, and I think all the protests have been worthwhile and they've helped shape a slightly better decision. But the fact is, I don't believe the PUC has any ability to enforce any of their regulations. They don't have the staff for it. We have a system that is staffed up, we have a franchise fee that pays for the enforcement. The PUC will just be saying that they'll have background checks, will have no ability to actually make it happen. The PUC will, will say they will check on the, on the equipment and make sure that it's safe, but they won't have the ability to guarantee that happens. And I fear that the, the private cars that are running around town delivering people, we don't know whether they'll be in, in safe condition. We don't know that when someone has a major accident, that they actually will be, actually will be covered by insurance, although the PUC decision directs that. There are a lot of problems that I think will result in a danger to our drivers, even things as simple as when you drive around in your own car, you don't have a separation that most of the taxi cabs have, protecting the driver from passengers in back. I think we, we will do this until we have the first couple disasters, and then we will have to rethink it anyway. So why not think it now and not wait for those to happen? I think by, that we should preserve our, our ability to appeal. I think that we need to, to... I think that we need to make sure that the PUC regulates this as well as possible. And I'm not against the technology, I think the technology is exciting, but we shouldn't be swept away by the idea of new technology and not protect our residents and our visitors and our drivers in the process. So I would ask that at the end of this discussion, we go into closed session and discuss the legal part of whether or not we should preserve our right to appeal this decision.
Mr. Sedia?
Let me say that I'm not quite sure that we are talking about new technology. I would be more impressed if the pickup was some type of Jetson futuristic movement of people, right? Or some Star Trek type of movement. But the business model remains fundamentally the same. You communicate to a carrier, the carrier picks you up and then places you at another location. That has not changed. There's a new mode of communication. We went from a phone that you cranked to a phone that you dialed to a cell phone and now to an app. The communication has changed, but the business model remains fundamentally the same. So it's not new, it's not fancy, it's not futuristic, it is fundamentally the same. So since it is fundamentally the same, then what is our responsibility? Our regulatory scheme places the public first and that's our obligation, is to represent the people of the city of Los Angeles. It's not picking sides here. If we're picking sides, we're picking the side of the people of Los Angeles. And so what is it our regulatory scheme does? It makes sure we know who the drivers are and makes sure, as I've been obsessed with the last 16 years, that everyone is licensed, tested and insured at the same standard, at the same criteria. It makes sure that the vehicles are at a certain standard. Now, the industry, as Chief Parks has indicated, has even gone beyond that. Not only do they make sure that the vehicles are safe, but that they are also moving towards green. Mr. Coretts, I think you're absolutely right. We're going forward with this because we're impressed with our friends who love the new communication model. And we think that that means we abdicate our responsibility to the public. But the minute that we begin to have some disaster, some tragedy, some calamity of a personal experience with one of these drivers, then it's going to come back on us on what we did or didn't do at this time. And so I agree with you, we should be proactive in this matter. I don't even know why the PUC has jurisdiction. But they do, but they don't have a capacity to execute their rules and regulations. And that falls on us. That falls on us and I think that is something that we have to keep in mind. Our obligation is to make sure that the visitors and the residents of the city are treated equally and fairly. We've spoken all day about the importance of industry and job creation and about redlining and about equal access. This is central to this discussion. Because this quote "new emerging" industry wants to be exempt from a criteria and standard that is well established and has well served the people of this city. And that's the fundamental question we should discuss. I know we're all enamored with new media, but fundamentally, the business model and the structure of this business is as old as the mustache.
All right. Mr. Fuentez?
Mr. Chair, I've got a question in terms of process. It was alluded to a second ago that there would be, and it was agendized prior as a closed session item. Will we be going into closed session on this item?
Yes, we will, depending on the members.
Well, I'm sorry, so depending on the members? So here's a question that I've got. Is there a staff that would oversee this? Is it DOT that oversees taxi cabs?
DOT is right there.
Is staff available?
Staff's right there.
Maybe they can tell us if we need to go into closed session.
And members, if we do feel we need to go to closed sessions, we will. That's the temperature, Mr. West.
Can I have staff come to the center table, please?
Staff to the center table, including the city attorney.
Yeah, my question is really for DOT staff. So if they could help me understand, a couple of years ago, the city of Los Angeles endeavored to have taxi cabs re-enter into new franchise agreements. And as conditions of those franchise agreements, it's my understanding that we asked these carriers to change their fleet. My question is, what is it that we asked them to do and what would make it so that we would have the same ability, if one of the goals was to reduce emissions, to have these new types of TNC carriers do the same thing? Or are we vulnerable conversely with the taxi cab franchisee folks now that we're not compelling other folks to change their fleets to be more emissions minded? And that's why I asked about closed session. Am I getting into something here that we should be talking about privately?
I think this is something that should be discussed in closed session in terms of, if you're asking a factual question, I think that's fine, but if it involves...
I'm concerned about future liability in terms of would we then afford some of these folks who have entered into these agreements to now sort of say, well, we don't have to change our emissions and we don't have to change our fleet? That's the heart of my question.
Tom Dreschler, Taxi Cab Administrator. Yes, we required the companies to agree by the end of 2015 to be roughly about 80% green. As I say, mostly hybrid, fuel efficient, clean vehicles. And they're actually ahead of schedule in implementing that. We allowed them to have another 20% to be cleaner, but not hybrid because that involves wheelchair accessible vehicles, larger vans and what have you. Well, this may be an issue for closed session, but I don't see any authority for the city to impose any kind of green taxi or green vehicle requirements on the TNCs. And there's nothing in the PUC ruling that addresses the subject whatsoever.
Does our charter give us the ability to regulate the TNC carriers to compel them to meet the same sort of emissions reduction interest that the previous franchisees had agreed to?
We would be preempted by the PUC rules. They regulate TNCs, we do not. They are, if this decision is upheld in the court system, they would be under the jurisdiction of the PUC to do that.
Mr. Coretts for a point of order.
Would this not be the kind of legal advice that should not be given in open session?
Well, I got to go to the chair. Mr. Fuentez, could I go to the chair of the committee right now? Are you complete with your questioning?
Okay, again, I'd like to sort of drill down a little bit more and if we have to do it in closed session, I'll ask for time then.
Mr. Bonin, before we go into closed session...
Thank you. Before we go into closed session, I just wanted to add a few additional comments. A lot of folks have talked about safety and this is posed as a safety issue, saying that, you know, if we don't oppose the PUC decision, it'll be the wild, wild west. I've read the PUC decision. It goes into great detail about safety requirements, as the LA Times points out, in some ways it's actually stricter than LA City stuff. They need to maintain commercial liability insurance of no less than $1 million. Criminal background checks on the drivers, zero tolerance substance abuse and drinking policy, zero tolerance policy if a complaint is filed over alcohol or drugs. TNCs need to get a copy of the driver's record, there has to be a driver's training program, valid driver's license check, prohibition from transporting more than certain numbers of passengers at a time, photographs being on display in the vehicle, a picture in the ridesharing app of the vehicle that's coming, including the license plate to identify the vehicle. There is tons of stuff in here. The idea that we say, we can't let the PUC do this because the PUC won't enforce it? I don't know about what community meetings you folks are going to. When I go to a community meeting, the number one complaint I get is the city's not enforcing something it said it's going to do. I don't know about how your offices get it, but if I'm calling DOT and I'm saying, dear Lord, we need a stop sign, dear Lord, we need a speed survey of this intersection, it's hard to get that done. Because as we heard the other day when 200 DOT staffers came in here, they're woefully understaffed. I'm no more confident in our ability to enforce something than I am in the PUCs. I should also say that, you know, there's more than one way to address this issue. You know, if we think that the safety requirements are not strict enough in the PUC decision, we need not appeal their decision. We can actually seek a language modification, which is a different process that perhaps Michael will get into in closed session, where we could specifically ask for them to include a provision for fingerprints, where we could ask for the flexibility to have more greenhouse gas restrictions. We could ask for any other number of things. So there's certainly a way to go forward with that. There's also in the PUC action a provision for a workshop process a year in to review this, specifically on the ADA access and on the redlining issue, but also for a general review and comment. And we are allowed to be a participant in that. I spoke to the chief of staff of the PUC just two days ago at this symposium and she said, you're more than welcome to do that. In fact, I understand from Mr. Coretts's office, they actually offered to hold the workshop as the next phase down here in Los Angeles.
Okay. Mr. Coretts, we're going to go into executive session if you want to hold it.
I'd actually like the opportunity just for 30 seconds to rebut...
30 seconds, hit it, Alan.
I don't think we hear from anyone a complaint that the taxi cab ordinance and our taxi cab industry is not enforced well. That is a separate entity, as I understand it, with separate funding. The money from the franchise fee goes towards regulation. This is a well regulated, well enforced industry. The tiny staff that the PUC has, I believe, has no ability to do that enforcement. And I think we will be on a parallel track. We will oppose, perhaps, and appeal this motion if we take that direction. But I think at the same time, we'll also try to work with them and if this goes forward, try to make it as safe and palatable and logical as possible. I mean, that is our greater goal, to make sure that there's real safety and the PUC has to figure out a way to actually put teeth in this where they definitely will endanger our residents.
All right, that's complete. Mr. City Attorney, could you read into the record? We're going to go executive session.
Yes, Mr. President, counsel will be going into closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4 in order to confer with legal counsel in deciding whether to initiate litigation in the matter described in the agenda.
All right, it's good. Sergeants, would you prepare the chambers, the John for All Chambers for executive session? We thank the public, we will be going into executive session, close out, one member per staff. Thank you. Thank you.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
And a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and then struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, KF5060, Washington.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents, and we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you, and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's, guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of a screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play...
And a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and then struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, KF5061, three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents. And we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents. It's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us. They are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
We're good now, sergeants. We're back in open session. Mr. Labange, if I can get you when you finish to move your way towards me. Mr. City Attorney, what is it that we need to do at this time?
Yes, in closed session, council voted on whether to initiate litigation and council did not vote on whether to initiate litigation or file the appeal. And the vote was seven to six. The yes votes were Blumenfield, Sadio, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Parks, and Price, with Weezer and Buscanino absent.
Okay. So what order, what do we do now and in what order? Help me, guys, tell me.
So I believe there's an intent to make certain motions in open session.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Labange.
All right, so one of the other motions was that the city council will seek a series of language modifications to the PUC decision, asking for ways to address a number of concerns from the city council, including insurance, safety, greenhouse gas emissions, redlining, and access for people with disabilities, as well as other concerns that may be raised by members of this council. We will hear those issues in Transportation Committee and then the council will make formal requests for modifications from the PUC.
Okay, Allen, let's proceed.
Before moving on, is there a seconder for that?
Well, wait, Mr. Walsh, please. Sergeant, help him understand. Okay, so what are we doing right now, Mr. Clerk?
We need a seconder, sir.
Okay, he's got a second. So now let's move forward with the votes. So what is the first one? Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Mr. Labange, did you want to?
Yeah, and the second motion, I'll try to state it a little bit more artfully, would be to make it part of the city's official legislative program to urge the state legislature to modernize and bring more clarity to the tangled set of regulations that has certain types of transportation services governed by the PUC and others by local municipalities.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, again, once again, we should have a seconder for that motion.
Oh, and Mr. Sadio.
Yes, I'd like to second that and note that it's, and when we discuss this, that the intent is to move jurisdiction on this matter from the PUC to the legislature so that then we would have an ability to have...
Let us vote on it, and I think we accomplished that.
Thank you.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Labange? That brings us where on today's agenda?
Mr. President, that brings, excuse me, council to general public comment for item not on today's agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. Labange.
Can I make a brief announcement regarding today's Transportation Committee meeting, which is supposed to start at 2:00 PM? I think the members of the committee have probably discussed transportation enough for this afternoon. We're going to cancel today's meeting. I will move forward. I'll waive consideration of the two commissioners who are scheduled. Bring them forward to council. Everything else we'll have at the next T-Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Sadio?
Yes, with respect to committees, housing was also canceled given the nature of our work today.
Housing's canceled, thank you so much. General public, is Arnold Sachs still here? John Walsh, please. Two minutes, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. First, during the meeting, I'm talking to the audience out there. You can hardly see me. You notice they went into recess. They went into recess because a member of the public had a seizure, fell, there was blood all over here, there was a stretcher, and they didn't even say what happened. That's the contempt that happened here. A person could have died here. I have no idea, and I wanted to know, what is the health of the person who came to this meeting, had a seizure, and was bleeding? And not a single one of you said a word about it. Garbage. Okay, number two, Weezer, why wasn't he here today? He wasn't here because he had his exchange party $750. He was drunk, he was driven home, and he has a hangover. Okay, Englander, Jane Doe. You want to know who the Jane Doe is that filed the lawsuit? I'm putting it on my website within an hour or two with a picture of the woman who is actually the Jane Doe, the Madame X. It's here. As far as the bullhook is concerned, Lily Thomas says it's a start. It isn't. It was Feld Entertainment that lobbied all of you, that got that garbage Gil Sadio to put a three-year delay. Let me tell you how you get rid of a bullhook. You take it and you drop it. It takes three seconds. You gave them and every other circus and every other city in America three years to get rid of the bullhook, which could have been removed. And you all voted on it, and Noba and Mr. Coretts called it a friendly motion. It was garbage. Every single elephant who was tortured is tortured because of garbage like Mr. Coretts. And I would tell you, HollywoodHighlands.org, you torture bulls, you torture elephants, and you torture us. Jay Walsh Confidential, garbage, all of you. Daniel Gus, is Daniel Gus here? Mr. Herman?
Downtown news. Jose Weezer for sexual harassment by former staffer. And what about Mr. Engler's staff? Do you see the problem of sexual harassment? Have we lost control of this city? Obviously, we have. Why? Because of what types of behavior that are always inappropriate, when and where, in a workplace? One, with jokes. Two, touching Mr. Englander. And other sexual comments that are always inappropriate. Always inappropriate. You guys are supposed to be leaders, professionals. And Eric, yes, cross your arms because you sat here for five days that I've been coming and representing Mr. Weezer for what? Nothing. Nothing have you done, Eric, regarding the disabling of us from using our sidewalk on Soto. What a creep. And when did you make crucial stopping decisions for your constituents? None whatsoever. Mr. Weezer hasn't been here since I've been coming. Why? Think about it. He's guilty. And many of you are guilty for the same reason that you sit here and lull a gag with this nonsense, as I call bullshit. I sat out there and laid there an hour in pity. Yeah, that's right, pity. I lied there, and I don't care. I'm disabled, people are disabled, people are elderly, people are sick. And this is what we have to tell you. We're tired of the nonsense. And let's go back to this ruling, August 7th, Zuma Dog, 2013. It reads, "Why is it unconstitutional to restrict speakers from making personal attacks in council meetings? Sometimes the use of language does not conform to the conventions of civility or decorum." Idiot, 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 right? Or then yet you send an email, right, Mr. Coretts? And what does it say in your email? Morons? Morons? We're not morons, we are constituents. And we serve the city of Los Angeles in due respect.
Brian Barajas, Brian?
All right, first, I want to practice some humility. Friday, I said Governor of Texas, but for real, it's Lieutenant Governor David Dewhurst. So correction. But all right, now I want to continue to this Obama death care. On the LaRushPac.com, you can find fact sheet on the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act of 2010, How Obama First Got the Stash. Yeah, "They Plan to Kill You" by Marcy Mary Baker. Now, the mustache is pretty much on Obama's face that he's beyond Hitler. Yeah. Now, on the whole aspects of governing government basing on monetary issues, well, you have to understand we are not a monetary issue. Wall Street operates on a monetary issue. See, nobody brings up the quantitative easing that's killing nations, or especially our nation. How many trillions of dollars have we pumped into for Wall Street at the same time Wall Street is asking to murder the population? The population is being killed. Detroit is a perfect example of this process. Transatlantic Grecian is the same damn thing. Every since this Kennedy assassination, people have become cowards. Cowards, stupid idiots. And so we need to adjust ourselves and think about the future. I'll give an example. February 15, 2013, Russia was hit by an asteroid. Who's thinking about asteroid defense? Russia. And NASA knows this. Charles Bolden, the director of NASA, knows this. And when he was asked, what can we do about it? He said pray. Now, an astronaut saying to the House of Representatives and to the American people that you guys need to pray if an asteroid or a comet heads our way. Because that's the quality of uselessness some of us have become. And we need to be better Americans and we need Glass-Steagall to crush Wall Street, crush his Anglo-Dutch empire forever.
Juan, I call it Juan, your turn.
I don't know about this irreverent speech. I was sitting over there while you did your special meeting and did your illegal vote. You know what? I went into rigor mortis. My dick was getting stiff. Anyway, I'm here to tell you that, is that inappropriate?
It seems extremely inappropriate.
But I'm talking about myself. I'm not talking about you.
No, it's extremely, just talk about city business.
City business? The city has no business in regulating people the way they do housing. You do not have any business in real estate decisions. You do not have any business in telling the people you need to pay $5,000 just to install a wall plug in your house. And if you do it illegally and we caught you, the penalties will be even bigger. You do not have any business meddling with the people's shelter. And every time anybody dies out in the streets because of the lack of shelter, you are guilty. You are murderers. You are criminals. And if you say that was handed down to me, you're still criminals because you're upholding a system that is driving a lot of people into homelessness. Now, is that appropriate? To tell you that you're guilty? And to tell you that all your drinking and driving and all your carousing and chasing women and at the expense of the people and sending all your military police forces against the homeless? Is illegal? Yeah, that is city business. That's people's business and you're violating...
Richard Robinson, thank you for your comments, sir. Richard Robinson, right now. Thank you. Sergeant, I have a card that just says Mia or MIA. I don't know if there's a last name.
Mr. President, members? Sir, God creating itself left eternity, infinity, and space creating us. Sir, the Bible states God is not a man. Numbers 23:19. The word, the abstraction, indeed the hypothetical construct, God, symbolizes that which exists. Apart from the natural world, the physical world, it is supernatural. It is metaphysical. God is not a man sitting on a throne with a book in his lap on a cloud, writing down our names so we can get into heaven someplace across the street. Pardon me for being supercilious, but life is eternal. Let me say this. Where are you? St. John 3:16? Or sitting in hell? That's another statement, pardon me. St. Matthew's chapter 6, verse 34 says... Let me get this straight. St. John 24, pardon me. I'm a Southern Baptist, being hit over the head if I don't remember this. Born there. St. John 4:24 says God is spirit. It doesn't say a spirit. Says God is spirit. First John 4:8 says God is love. Life is God.
St. John 4 said your two minutes are up. Henry Marine?
MIA government employee, that's what it is. All right, thank you. And Bible is the acronym for basic instructions before losses and earnings and trust violations. Now, we got a lot of government employees that's missing in action. Pay us 1,000 hours. And in this State of the Union, any construction work that is publicly funded is subject to prevailing wage and trust laws. Now, when you get over 1,000 hours, you got to be brought into participation in a public employee benching and benefit plan. And as you well know, public, hackling, coal employees were misrepresented as hiring hall employees for benefit purposes. Therefore, you have made a great discrepancy in where you sent your money for my benefit and the benefit of others. So it would behoove you to recover the money that was sheltered in ERISA-type plans, which the government has no business participating in in the first place, and have it rolled over. But fortunately, there's such a thing called the VFCP, Voluntary Fiduciary Correction Program. And with this program, it takes care of all the people who couldn't account for our time and money in the first place. Now, y'all got a, y'all had a 15-year smoothing period for your payments to Lasers. Now, y'all got 15 years to get this money, y'all got 13 years left to get the money back. Mr. Corretts? Mr. Krikorian? Y'all always complaining about how bad people treated y'all in y'all country and y'all coming over here and treating us bad in our country. Like I told you before, Uncle Remus say, if it ain't actual, factual, and satisfactory, Mr. Bucket is going to make me put you on the bucket list. That's what we're, Mr. Pat Bucket.
That completes the public comment today. Members, we have some announcements, right? Mr. City Attorney?
Just to clean up of item number 33, to assist the clerk in processing that, since the original motion, it failed seven to six, Mr. Bonner's amending motion should be characterized as a substitute motion.
So recommended and ordered, right, Mr. Clerk? What's before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Clerk? Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral?
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? I have one very important, Mr. Krikorian first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that on Saturday morning at 9 o'clock here in City Hall in the Public Works Room, the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates will be having the Neighborhood Council Budget Day. The mayor will be there to discuss the budget, as will I, and it will be an opportunity for Neighborhood Council board members, stakeholders, and anyone else from the public interested to provide input and comment about our city's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. I have a very special announcement. Our colleague, Mr. Jose Weezer, will be leading a blood drive tomorrow in support of children with leukemia. It's tomorrow. And all who are eligible, or if they haven't given lately, give blood tomorrow. The American Red Cross Blood Drive for Children with Leukemia tomorrow, courted by Mr. Jose Weezer, 9:00 AM to 3:00 in the fourth floor media room. Any other announcements, members? All rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Sadio?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Juan Regosa was born July 11, 1927, in Flint, Michigan, and was laid to rest on Tuesday, October 15, 2013. At the age of two, his family returned to Mexico where he was raised. In 1944, at the age of 17, he returned to his birth country and made his way into the San Joaquin Valley in California picking oranges, melons, and cotton. A few years later, he made his way to the Southern California area. Tired of working in the fields, he found a job at Gillespie Furniture Company where he worked as a manufacturer for over 30 years. On October 9, 1954, he married his wife, Nellie. Soon, they had two children. In 1957, he and his wife bought their home in Pico Rivera, where they raised their children and where he lived until the time of his passing. Juan Regosa survived by his loving wife of 59 years, Nellie Regosa, his son, Armando Regosa, his daughter, Corina Villaregosa, and his grandchildren, Antonio and Natalia Villaregosa. May he rest in peace.
Members, no other adjourning motions. Go ahead and serve the city well. Every day's a blessing. Good afternoon, thank you for your service.
Amen.